Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Lakewood City Council regular hybrid meeting of February 14th, 2022 here in council chambers, and we still have some folks joining us online. I want to welcome them as well on Valentine's Day. For those folks that wish to participate outside of public comment in here, if you wish to do public comment, please sign up at the back of the room. If you wish to engage on the internet, the number is going to be 720-707-2699. Webinar ID 84957320840. You'll press pound twice and star nine to request to speak, star six to unmute. If you wish to speak under general business, you're welcome to, or under general public comment, you are welcome to raise your hand right now. That way we make sure we get to you. And with that, a quick please call the roll.
Paul?
Here.
Abel?
Here.
Franks? Franks?
So it sounds like they're having trouble hearing us.
Jansen?
Here.
Mayat Guerrero?
Here.
Oliver?
Here.
Sharzai?
Here.
Springsteen?
Stewart?
Here.
Strom?
Here.
Vincent?
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, we're gonna have to figure this out. Please. Counselors, can you hear us? No. So why don't we just take a quick recess, please?
The February 14th, 2022 Lakewood City Council Hybrid Meeting at 7:38. And would certainly like to thank everyone and thank you for your patience as we worked through some technical difficulties and we'll get right to work and get moving forward right now. So next up, we did have a roll note that everybody's here and we'll stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, so next up, I will read our Statement of Conflict of Interest. All members of the City Council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2 Prin B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The City Council is empowered by Charter 7.2B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. Now we'll move into item five. Read that into the record, please.
Item five, Presentation Overview of the City Attorney's Office.
All right. So for those just tuning in, we've been doing a series of kind of how things work for six new council members and tonight is, and I should say for all the council and the mayor, and tonight we'll have a brief overview of the City Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Mayor. We're trying to figure out where the video will be.
Yes, he's supposed to be.
We may be able to flip. Here's Ben right here.
All right, and tonight giving us our presentation will be our City Attorney, Allison McKinney-Brown.
So one of the things that you've all gotten to know about me is I tend to over-explain. So this evening, I've actually recorded-
Talk closer. You're just gonna have to talk closer? Yeah.
I've recorded audio with my presentation and hopefully that'll get us, keep us on track because we're already a few minutes behind where we wanted to be. So with that, here I go. So I'm going to opt to read this because of our technical difficulties.
If you're not prepared to do it without the presentation, okay, I was just saying we could move it to the study session next week. Forgive me the week after. Okay.
The City Charter provides that the City Attorney's Office serves two primary roles: to act as the chief legal counsel for the city in regard to all litigation and to serve as the chief legal advisor to the City Council, City Manager, all departments of the city, and boards and commissions. But what does that mean? A City Attorney's Office is required to have a broad skill set to meet the varied needs of a local government. Currently, I work with nine attorneys, including three prosecutors, to meet these needs. As an integrated City Attorney's Office, the legal staff provides legal support to the City Council, City Manager, all departments of the city, and boards and commissions. This diagram illustrates the general tasks and responsibilities of the City Attorney's Office. Some tasks, such as litigation, licensing, and municipal court, are very time-intensive and require the undivided attention of one or more attorneys. But those tasks only represent three of the bubbles on this diagram. Every other department, board, and commission, as well as the City Council, requires legal support as well. Legal support is commonly in the form of drafting ordinances, resolutions, codes, legal letters, and legal forms, reviewing contracts, researching legal questions associated with the activities of the city, writing legal memos, and supporting general legal training. Legal support is also being aware of current legislation and recent federal and state court decisions so as to advise departments how to prepare or respond. Legal support is being proactive, including looking for class action settlements that may return funds to the city, reaching out to online retailers that are unaware of the city's sales tax law, suggesting innovative legal approaches to community-wide issues, and viewing the sites of ongoing nuisance matters to find innovative responses as well. The general tasks listed within each of the bubbles of this diagram are the primary tasks associated with that department or service as identified by the attorney assigned to each. While not a complete list, it does serve to illustrate the responsibilities the City Attorney's Office must be prepared to meet every day. And again, because we're on fast forward, I'm not going to go over that in much more So now that you've had a brief introduction to what a City Attorney's Office does within a city, let's move on to Local Government Law 101. Local government law involves all levels of law ranging from the federal constitution to local policies and procedures. Understanding how to interpret and apply the law also requires knowledge of case law precedent, which is a term used to describe the judicial authority to interpret the law. This diagram represents the bodies of law that impact local governments in descending order of authority. At the top is the law of the land, the U.S. order of authority. At the top is the law of the land, the U.S. Constitution. While the U.S. Constitution was originally written to serve as a contract between the newly-established federal government and we, the people, over time, the Bill of Rights, which is the first ten amendments to the U.S. Constitution, was extended to apply beyond the federal government and is now generally applicable to the relationship between the states and the people within the states. The application of the Bill of Rights to City Council meeting procedure can be seen in the conformance to the First Amendment during the City Council meetings, and in conformance to the mandates of Fifth Amendment due process law when participating in a quasi-judicial hearing. Next is the State Constitution. The State Constitution establishes the legal authority of the state and local governments to both exist and to create law. State law is established in accordance with the authority vested in the state legislature by the State Constitution. Generally, state law governs matters of statewide concern. The highest local law is the city's Home Rule Charter. The citizens of the City of Lakewood follow the constitutional provision allowing it to form as a home-rule city by adopting a charter, which is basically the constitution of the city. Local law is also enacted by the City Council. The City Council, as a body, is empowered to create laws regarding matters of local concern within the authority established within the city's charter, and the limits set by the State Constitution. Laws for the city are created by ordinance. City regulations are delegations of authority to the city manager or another agent of the city by either the city charter or other law to establish rules to carry out the intent of the law. Examples include the city manager's authority to establish administrative regulations, and the city clerk's authority to establish licensing regulations. Finally, there are policies and procedures. Policies and procedures are administrative directives enacted by a city official with authority to enact such directive. Examples include the procedures established at the department level regarding the manner in which the department will carry out its assigned due. So as you can see, there's a lot of law that impacts local governments, and that's not all the law that we deal with. The Open Meetings Law is pretty easy to follow. It is intended to assure that everyone knows when and where a meeting of the public body will occur. So if three members of a public body communicate about the business of the city, or make a decision about the business of the city, a public meeting has occurred. The actions taken at a public meeting are only lawful if full and complete notice has been given to the public. So that's what this diagram represents. The Open Records Act was established by the state legislature to guarantee access to public records, to establish the outlines of a process for making records available that recognize the limited resources of communities, and to identify those matters to be accorded The Colorado Open Records Act, or CORA, begins with the statement that most documents maintained in the regular course of public business are open records of the city regardless of their physical form. It should also be noted that the City of Lakewood adopted the records retention schedule in two thousand and seventeen, and that's established by the state. So the records, how they are stored, happens in accordance with the records retention law, not CORA. CORA includes a number of complexities, including in regard to the individual or entity maintaining the records and which documents are actual records of the city. For this short presentation, I won't detail all of those steps and procedures of CORA, but I do want to encourage you to visit the city clerk's website for more specific information. What I do want to address tonight are the provisions of CORA specific to elected officials. You should know that public records includes the correspondence of elected officials with four exceptions. First, the elected official's work product. Work product has a very long definition that mostly benefits members of the state legislature. But you can generally understand the term to include advisory materials which express an opinion or are deliberative in nature, and are communicated for the purpose of assisting such elected official in reaching a decision within the scope of their authority. Work product does not include anything that indicates a decision. Second, without a demonstrable connection to the exercise of functions required or authorized by law or administrative rule, and does not involve the receipt of or expenditure of public funds. So that would be the emails that have to do with your dentist appointment or those types of things. Third, a communication from a constituent to an elected official that clearly implies by its nature or content that the constituent expects that it is a confidential communication, or that is communicated for the purpose of requesting that the elected official render assistance or information related to a personal and private matter that is not publicly known. And finally, publicizing, if publicizing the document would violate a law or court order. It should be noted that there is also a long list of exceptions to CORA, but those are primarily applicable to the city are those listed. And personnel files, which includes letters of reference, records of sexual harassment complaints, items protected by state or federal law, attorney-client privileged communications, real estate appraisals, trade secrets, or confidential, commercial, or financial information, any record made, maintained, or kept by a criminal justice entity is not a CORA record, but it may be subject to CCGRA. And deliberative process materials. Again, that's the work product. To encourage the greatest productivity, the City Council meeting process is well-established through charter provisions, Lakewood Code, and the City Council Policy and Procedure Manual. It begins with the annual setting of the legislative priorities, and then moves into setting meeting agendas, determining what type of formal action is appropriate to the topic, and identifying the appropriate form of public hearing. Setting the annual legislative agenda is a priority for the City Council, but people, including the community's elected leaders, won't always have a shared vision. So what are the primary methods established within the Charter, Code, and Policies and Procedure Manual to encourage collaboration and consensus building? City Council agendas include all of the general business of the city, the actions that are mandated by state law, the city's charter, and the city's code, as well as actions arising from ongoing projects instituted by previous city councils. Additionally, each year, the City Council joins together in a working session to reach consensus on that year's legislative priorities. So as you can see from this chart, the agenda-setting process is ongoing, but new legislative agenda items get added annually. The City Council Policy point five seven provides that the City Council sets the legislative priorities for the year during the annual planning session, and that agenda informs staff's work assignments and council agenda items throughout the year. The policy also explains how the City Council must work together to establish their legislative priorities through consensus building at the annual planning session, or through consensus building at a regular meeting of the City Council. And this diagram just restates the policies that the City Council adopted in their Policy and Procedure Manual. The City Council has, formal actions of the City Council may only take place at a regular or special meeting of the body. There are three forms of action: ordinances, resolutions, and motions. Ordnances are primarily used to establish laws. Resolutions are primarily used to memorialize a decision of the body, and motions are used to indicate the will of the majority of the membership of the body. So how does it work? The processes for each of the three formal actions are slightly unique. An ordinance begins as a topic at a study session. At the study session, staff can explain the topic, answer questions, and seek direction from the City Council. The City Council can request the topic be sent to a board or committee, be further researched, not be pursued, or be brought back to a regular session of the City Council in the form of an ordinance. When an ordinance is brought forward to the City Council, the City Charter requires it to appear on the agenda at two successive regular meetings. The purpose for appearing on the first agenda is just to publicize the date of the public hearing associated with the ordinance. The purpose of appearing on a second agenda is to hold a public hearing and determine the outcome of the ordinance. Deciding whether to approve or deny an ordinance is the most complex action of the City Council because ordinances generally establish law. Ordnances can only be modified or repealed through another ordinance. Resolutions are not as complex as ordinances because they serve to memorialize a decision of the council but not to establish law. They are rarely brought to a study session for preview and are only required to be placed on a single agenda. Motions of the body are the most common form of action and the least formal form of action. While motions are used to approve ordinances and resolutions, general motions may also be used to take a less formal action. Motions are documented within the minutes of the meeting. Two forms of legislative decision-making require the City Council to hold a public hearing. Ordnances always require some form of public hearing to comply with the city's charter. Ordnances that implicate a due process right of a specific individual or property owner require a quasi-judicial public hearing. Ordnances that are held for the purpose of allowing the public an opportunity to speak to the subject are called legislative public I put an ear with this because legislative public hearings are about listening. Legislative public hearings are relatively informal and are required to be held prior to vote upon an ordinance's second reading. They serve to provide a means for interested parties to voice their opinion as to the outcome of the decision before the City Council. Resolutions don't require a public hearing, but Lakewood has an established practice of providing members of the public an opportunity to be heard on resolutions pending on a consent agenda. So step one is to hold a legislative public hearing prior to voting upon a pending ordinance. Step two is to vote upon the pending ordinance. Quasi-judicial public hearings are formal. That's why you get the picture of a judge for this one. They're held when the matter pending before the City Council impacts a specific individual or specific property. Therefore, these types of hearings are most common in association with land use decisions. But just because the topic impacts land use doesn't mean the public hearing will be quasi-judicial. For example, if the ordinance pending before the City Council will make a change to the zoning code, then the public hearing is legislative because the code is not about any specific person or property. If the ordinance pending before the City Council is to change the zoning status of a specific parcel of property, then the public hearing is quasi-judicial. There are several mandatory processes with which the City Council must comply in order to protect the individual's due process rights. Legal notice requirements. City Council acts as a panel of judges. The City Council hears evidence to establish facts. The City Council applies those facts to the established legal standards. There's no ex parte evidence, so council members may not hear or gather evidence outside the public hearing. They must make their decision based upon the evidence received at the public hearing. And council members have a duty to recuse themselves from the decision-making process if they have a bias or conflict of interest. And last, some final notes to cover arising out of the law impacting local government officials. First, it's fine to identify yourself as a member of the Lakewood City Council, but it is always important to make sure that you're not creating the perception that your personal views are the views of the City Council. The city hasn't adopted the provisions mandated by the Constitution to take it out from under the state's ethics code, but those rules are very straightforward. In short, don't vote on matters in which you or your spouse have a personal, business, or fiduciary interest. Third, honor the city's charter by complying with its requirements, including respecting the council manager form of government, and avoiding becoming involved in the personnel matters the city employs. Fourth, the city's charter, through the city's code, provides that every member of the City Council must protect confidential information of the city. And fifth, last but not least, take the opportunity to read the Short Handbook on Ethics, Liability, and Best Practices for Local Government Officials in order to gain further insights and guidance on the information presented this evening. So that was a very fast overview of a lot of legal issues, and I'd be happy to answer questions, and I'd also be happy to accept questions by email. And if you do send those by email, I will make sure that every member of the Council gets a copy of the question and answers.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Maia Guerrero.
Thank you so much for that presentation and having to do more than you expected this evening despite doing a lot of prep work. I just have, I have two brief questions. The first is if you could go in to explain executive sessions a little more specifically. My question is like when, like what topics it's appropriate to, or needed to have an executive session? And then my other question is on the quasi-judicial. We, there's several different properties up for special permitting processes in my ward at this moment, so I'm getting a lot of questions, and I want some clarity, given that those are specific, but those won't come before us, on how I'm, like what types of information I'm allowed to give out or like talk about on those. And we might need to talk more about the specific questions, but like just if you could talk a little more about the quasi-judicial generally. Thank you.
So in short, executive sessions are an exception to the Open Meetings Act. And there are specific rules we have to follow in order to recess into an executive session. You'll notice that we make sure that information is available in advance, if at all possible. Although by charter, it is all right for this city to decide to go into executive session, even if that's not on the agenda. To recess into executive session requires an extra-large majority of the City Council to agree, and that can only happen for certain reasons. Most of the time we go into executive session, it is for one of two things: attorney-client privileged information, which is information that if shared with the general public would do fiduciary harm to the city, or oftentimes to instruct negotiators on how to negotiate on certain topics. Land use is something that can be discussed, land sales types of things can be discussed in executive session. Very, there's a very narrow authority to discuss personnel matters, but that's incredibly narrow, and for the most part, that just doesn't ever happen. So those are the four primary rules. Because executive session law covers a multitude of forms of government, there are also some things that might cover schools that don't cover us. But those are the four major ones that impact cities. Quasi-judicial. So when you, you are in a quasi-judicial public hearing, you need to think of yourself as a judge, because you are a judge. You're, you are doing the same thing a judge would do. You're listening to the evidence presented. You're looking at the standard that's set forth in the law, whatever that might be, and you're applying the facts that you hear to this legal standard to determine what the answer is to the question. It's a Fifth Amendment due process right for people who own property or have some specific interest to be heard on whatever that topic is, because it impacts them directly. And the rules are set up so that because it's impacting them directly, that they typically have the right to make a full presentation on the topic, and then other people who are impacted ancillary to that will usually get about three minutes to make a public statement toward the topic if they want to. You, as, thinking of yourself as judges, you can't wander outside the courtroom and get information, gather evidence. So don't call up the, I don't know, let's say it's a developer, it's a land use issue. Don't call up the developer and say, hey, I'll vote for you if you'll do X. You should not be communicating with people who are going to be coming in front of the city, because remember, you can only make your decision based on the evidence presented in the hearing. There are several land use decisions, the one that comes to mind are special use permits, that have a quasi-judicial hearing, but they hold that quasi-judicial hearing in front of Planning and Zoning Commission. And there is no, that does not come to the City Council. So these people will get their due process rights met, but not in front of the City Council. council. So it's depending on the action, whether or not the city council is going to be the final arbiter, final decision-maker, or whether that gets, or that happens at another level. If you're not going to hold a quasi-judicial hearing, if you're not going to be the judge, then your rights revert back to the same rights as any citizen. Having said that, please be careful. There's always a perception of impropriety if a decision-maker or someone perceived by the community as a decision-maker is actively outside the process. So be careful about that. And also showing up to meetings to talk about public business, if there's three or more of you in that meeting, that doesn't mean that you can't be there. What it means is do not speak. It's when three of you are together discussing the business of the city. So if three or four of you are sitting in like a neighborhood meeting listening, that's fine. It's when you speak that it changes to a open meeting of the city council.
Counselor Jansen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so I have a question that since the presentation includes discussion of the Colorado Sunshine laws, are the city council legislative committee meetings notices available online for public, for the public with a Zoom link?
Yes, as a matter of fact, city clerk, Michelle Millard, do you want to speak to how you post notices for the meetings?
For the executive?
All meetings that get posted.
Yes, we usually try to post, well, council meetings, we definitely try to post those 10 days or more ahead. And for executive sessions, we do the same thing, 10 days or more ahead. So it's the same.
What about boards and commissions?
Boards and committee meetings, boards and commissions, we post those at least 24 hours ahead of time. Most of the time, it's posted about a week ahead of the meeting. Depends on how much notice we have and when we get the packet. They come from different departments sometimes. Sometimes we create them ourselves, so if we have the control to create them ourselves, we'll make sure they get out there at least a week ahead of time is our goal.
By law, they must be posted 24 hours in advance unless it's under the emergency meeting rule, which very rarely applies.
Yes, I, so I had asked a long time ago about who the city attorney actually represents, and there still seems to be some confusion about that to me, whether it's an individual council member or staff member, the mayor or city manager, or representing the city as a whole. And so my, one of my questions is, in October, you advised council to take action against me with a letter to the Independent Ethics Commission in retaliation for me being a material witness in a civil rights case against the city. And the IEC responded within two hours that your advice was wrong and that the council body and mayor could not ask for their advisor opinion, especially since we're a home rural city. So my question is, why didn't you inform me or the public for six weeks that the IEC had rejected your advice? And is it your advice to this body to intimidate witnesses on behalf of the city?
So to understand the role of the city attorney, you look to charter. And charter says the city attorney shall be the chief legal counsel of the city and the legal advisor to the city council, city manager, all departments of the city, and boards and commissions. The city attorney shall perform such other duties as the city council may direct. So it's a broad spectrum of parties that are represented by the city attorney's office. As to your question about the city council's decision to pass a motion asking for advice from the Independent Ethics Commission, that was a decision of the city council, and it's not appropriate for staff to second-guess that. But they, as I'm remembering that motion, the motion was to ask for advice on how to handle potential conflicts of interest that the city council may believe that they would be experiencing based on outside decisions. So that request was sent, and the decision of the IEC, I think, was that because the city council was only asking for advice and was not filing any action asking to take, well, they weren't wanting to file a complaint against anybody, and the IEC said, we don't do that. If you want to file a complaint, file a complaint. If you just want to ask for advice, we only give advice to individuals, we won't give advice to a body. So that's where we were left with that. Keep in mind, the city council has the authority under the state constitution to pass an ordinance or resolution setting forth your own ethics standards, and if you do that, that will take you out from underneath the state's ethics rules.
Well, my question was why you didn't inform anybody for six weeks about this?
So that was a decision of the city council, and the city council had the mayor send the letter, and whatever communication would have happened was not at the staff level, so it wouldn't be appropriate for me to talk about decisions of the city council. Are there any other questions this evening?
So it was the mayor.
Are there any other questions?
Any other questions? Nicely done. Thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, will the clerk please read the next item into the record?
Item six, presentation update on the police department's body worn camera program.
All right, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hodson.
Yes, thank you, actually, our police chief. Chief McCaskey is going to introduce the topic of the body worn cameras. It's been a long time coming, and I'll ask you to introduce the folks who have been working so hard on this project. Thank you, chief.
Thanks, city manager. Good evening, Mayor and council. So with me tonight doing our presentation is going to be Division Chief Anita Kester, and I believe you all met her the first of January when we did our overview of the police department. Jess Yarborough from our information technology department is here, and Carolyn Wolf from the city attorney's office is here as well. And in the audience, we have, she's not speaking, but our IT director, Alina Walters, is here as well. So we have a short presentation, and hopefully, technology works, and I'll stay away from it because I'll make, I'll do something wrong here. But I'll turn it over to Division Chief Kester.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, council, and we will do our best to continue with the technology. And happy Valentine's Day. Before I get started on tonight's presentation, I do want to take a moment and acknowledge all the incredible hard work that so many people have put into this program. And while we have the opportunity to stand in front of you and talk about this program, there are numerous people who have put in hundreds of hours to make sure we have a comprehensive, successful program that's great for our city, great for the police department, and great for our community. Throughout this presentation, if I use the term BWC, that is synonymous with body worn camera. Sometimes I get passionate and start rolling, don't want to get anybody confused. And then also, we did receive a couple questions via Lakewood Speaks, and I will try to address those questions throughout the presentation tonight. This presentation is an overview and provides a historical perspective into creating our body worn camera program. Body worn cameras became widely used in the United States in 2013, and they continue to grow in popularity today. In 2015, at that time, Division Chief McCaskey researched bringing a body worn camera program to the Lakewood Police Department. However, the city budget was not a place to take on such a substantial financial burden, and we pride ourselves with the relationship and the positive relationship we have with our community and our focus and commitment to community policing. And it was determined that a body worn camera program did not fit our needs at that time. Fast forward to 2019, and the body worn cameras programs throughout the nation had increased in popularity. Research was indicating that these programs helped to produce transparency through communities and also build trust. I began working on a proposal to bring another, to bring a body worn camera program into the city, when in 2020, we had our summer of violence and legislation mandated that all sworn officers throughout the state of Colorado were, will wear body worn cameras. Senate Bill 20217 required that all law enforcement agencies implement a body worn camera program in July of 2023. We saw that as an opportunity to bring a program to the police department. Working with the city manager, we proposed that we go live with body cameras in the first quarter of 2022, which is a whole year prior to it being legislated and mandated. And here we are, and I'm wearing a body worn camera, so we've made it. With that approval, we began working through the procurement process and figuring out which vendor and which company and hardware is the best for us. So let's talk about Senate Bill 20217. It requires that all law enforcement agencies in the state of Colorado wear body worn cameras while on duty. And Colorado is not alone in this legislation. There are seven other states throughout the nation with similar legislation. Each state has different statutory requirements, and Colorado requires that all officers will activate their body worn cameras when engaging in officer-initiated contact or any contact with citizens to enforce or investigate violations of the law. If you notice, this legislation does not allow us to turn off the camera while contacting a citizen, even when asked. I've asked our agents not to lose sight and forget about our victims. As you know, people do not traditionally call the police department because they want to celebrate. Instead, they call us on potentially their worst days. Those stories, those moments, those situations will be captured on video and deserve to be treated with compassion. So while the legislation requires the recording of these vulnerable moments, the agents are encouraged to be compassionate and empathetic to ease our victims' fears and concerns. In specific situations, the legislation does allow us to protect an individual's privacy prior to releasing that video. One of the questions that came in was regarding, how do we know when we are in compliance? And are we tracking as a city and as a police department when the cameras are being turned on and if that's appropriate? And there is software that is a part of this package that we purchased that does allow our supervisors to ensure that we are in compliance, that we're monitoring when the cameras come on and the percentage of which, and when they come on appropriately and during those moments, so we can monitor that for activation. Building this program has taken two years and hundreds of hours of work. We identified six phases of implementation, starting with identifying stakeholders and partners, all the way through with going live. As you can see, we are in phases four, five, and six concurrently, and we have approximately 75 cameras currently deployed with a phased rollout program continuing on through the end of April. Phase two involved the vendor and equipment selection, and I'm going to turn that over to Jess to discuss.
Hello.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. In October of 2020, we partnered with Finance to publish a request for information where we received eight vendor responses. Using both the police department requirement as well as security requirements, we were able to narrow that down to two companies to evaluate further in a pilot with the police department, where we had the officers, we had over 50% of the officers participate for four weeks in November and December to complete a test pilot for camera and system functionality. Using these scores, we were able to select a vendor in February of 2021. The BWC program costs $1.4 million each year, which includes camera hardware, software, and additional staff. In speaking with the other agencies in the area, each of them indicated the need to have adequate support staff for a program of this size and magnitude. We have applied for and been granted about $240,000 of Department of Justice grants. So far, these grants are only for hardware and not additional technology requirements such as storage or personnel, but we continue to look for supplementary funding opportunities. I'm going to turn it back to Division Chief Kester.
As mentioned in the previous slide, the body worn camera program requires additional staff to manage the increased digital media. The DRVR team, which is our digital records and video release team, consists of one sergeant and two civilian support staff. We are currently in the process of hiring and recruiting for an additional full-time employee. It's a shout-out, I'm just throwing out to the community right now, for recruiting. The team is responsible for insurance compliance with the legislation pertaining to the release of the public digital records requests. And an example of our collaboration and interdepartment cooperation is that our DRVR team is actually housed in our IT division, and because space in the police department is at a pure commodity at this point, so. One of the questions that did come online was asking how, if people wanted to obtain the video footage from the body worn cameras, and that's through the standard request or the report request. So that can be done via the online City of Lakewood website, or a appointment can be made through the records division and the paperwork requested. So it's just like requesting any normal report at this point. A part of the body worn camera program is the opportunity to improve our digital media storage. Since going live with this storage and this software in September of 2021, we have added 180 new pieces of digital evidence. It's also included an opportunity to use Axon Citizen, which is a great tool that allows agents and detectives to send an internet link to a citizen to submit their cellphone photos or an example of like Ring doorbell videos, and they can do that remotely. So this program not only improves the efficiency of the police department, but it also increases the ease and convenience for our citizens. In that six months, we have sent out over 3,300 citizen links and received back 8,200 pieces of digital evidence at that point, as we can only imagine. As I referenced in my opening comments, the creation of the body worn camera program was not done in a vacuum. It required the assistance of numerous groups both inside the city and throughout, or inside the organization and throughout the city. The success of this program is because of the incredible collaboration and relationships between the different departments, and it's really what makes the City of Lakewood special. These partnerships include IT, as you can only imagine, the body cameras require significant technological infrastructure and support. Community resources once again had to come in and do some modifications to our building to house the cameras, docks, and equipment. The city manager's office, Finance, and the city attorney's office worked with the vendor and the vendor contracts and the procurement process. The court marshals, while they're a small unit, we've attached them, they are under the PD's body worn camera program. Human Resources has helped us significantly with recruiting of and hiring of our DRVR team. And then Jeffcom has done a lot to help us streamline the process for tagging these videos to ensure they correlate to and connect with the calls for service. A program of this size also has a ripple effect with the numerous stakeholders throughout the organization and community. These stakeholders were a part of the early discussions to ensure we addressed their concerns, because anytime we turn on cameras, it's going to have a direct and indirect impact on their organizations. Within the police department, we created numerous civilian and sworn working committees responsible for policy writing, process creation, training, and community engagement. And other law enforcement agencies provided insight to their programs, and we were able to learn many lessons from them. And then we also worked closely with Jefferson County Schools, the DA's office, hospitals, and Jeffcom. This is where our technology comes into play. The body worn camera program has a significant impact on our community. We plan to use different social media videos, such as this one released in January, hopefully going to show it to you here soon, to help educate and highlight the great work and unique programs of the Lakewood Police Department.
We'll see.
You can promote Anita presenter on her name and then mute the room. You can promote needed presenter on her name and then mute the room.
Is the room muted before I share?
And for reference.
And one of the things we were going to do, but also similar technological issues, is we were going to show you how to livestream and do a demonstration on the cameras. But the big thing to say is when the cameras, and I've actually got a camera on me, so knowing that the camera is going to face, it's about 180 degree field of view, so anything that's happening behind me is not captured. And then when I turn my head or if I point this direction, it's only going to face the direction of the officer that's on scene. And all I just want to say is I'm excited for the opportunity for our agency to wear body worn cameras. It's going to highlight and provide such great insight into the incredible work done by the men and women of our police department, and so we're pretty excited about it. And I know it was a very quick overview. I apologize that the video did not work. It's one of, you know, it's a Valentine kind of night, and we can, we can take any questions.
Great, thank you, Division Chief. And again, I would just echo the thanks to all those involved in really looking at the backroom of all the different, I think that's about every agency but Planning and Public Works, I think, were part of this. So thank you for that, and I know you are excited about this because it will highlight the many great things that our men and women do day in and day out. And certainly, I never thought of that sensitivity to hospitals when you're engaged at the hospital, which is quite often as well, I'm sure. All right, do we have any questions on this update? I can't see the screen from councilors. Councilor Springsteen?
Well, it was more just I wanted to congratulate the police department for doing this. I, you know, I am disappointed that it took a state bill to force this change. I know that we've been blaming the budget for a long time. We really have the most expensive, arguably the most expensive police budget in the state, but I, the other thing I wanted to congratulate you for is for rolling it out a year earlier than what was being planned, as I recall, the city manager was telling us 2023 last year. And I'm very thankful for many people who have called in and asked for body cams over the past year. And so now it's being rolled out an entire year earlier, and I think that's really going to save countless lives, I think, both citizens and police, and it is going to save us significant liability in the city. And so this is great to hear. I've waited for this moment for a long time, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, anything else? Counselor Matt Guerrero.
I want to echo Counselwoman Springsteen in that it's so exciting to have this program be rolled out in Lakewood, and I have seen that video. So for, since we weren't able to do it due to the technical difficulties, I really want to encourage everybody to go watch it. It's, it's well produced, so it's like very gripping, but it's really informative, and so thank you for that public outreach on this too, because it's important. If the point of this is transparency, people have to know what's happening, so I do appreciate that arm of this as well. And I wanted to note that you talked about how you've gotten 8,200 pieces of evidence from citizen requests or something, there was a bunch of numbers. Has that been leading to either more arrests or mediation or a police intervention?
No, that is when we respond to a call for service or we're having contacts and someone is telling us, hey, I've got pictures on my cellphone, or I have Ring doorbell video, how can I get it to you? And there's often some confusion with that. So it's simply a method to get the digital evidence transported in an easily and convenient manner so that they're not having to wait for an agent to come out to pick up the video. We can send them a link, or the detective could send a link to them, and they respond back with the evidence, and they're not having, it's a very convenient system.
Fabulous, thank you so much for that clarification.
Absolutely.
And you don't have to have an answer for this, but if you do, I'd be, I'd love to hear, you know, what's next. We have such an innovative police force, what do you all see on the horizon?
There's a lot coming, so one step at a time. We're, we have the body worn cameras all the way through April, so every Tuesday for the next several months, we are rolling out more cameras. So that is, that is at the forefront of our challenges right now, so, but more to come.
Great, thank you so much.
Fantastic. I think that's it.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Okay, next up is general public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask all persons calling in or in person tonight, which is nice to see, respect the decorum of city council chambers. Again, if you're calling in and you wish to speak, go ahead and press star nine, pound nine, make sure I'm saying it right. Counselor Franks will correct me. Do you believe it's star, pound?
It is star nine.
Yeah, star nine to request, and then when your last four digits are called, star six to unmute. For those calling in, when you're at 30 seconds left, you'll get a, and then when your time is up, you'll get another bell. For those folks that are here, there'll be a timer at the podium that'll be red, or that'll go green, yellow at 30 seconds, and red when your time is up, and I'll politely ask to wrap that up. I can't see the telephones, but let's start chambers first. And in my sensing, is this a pooling, Mr. Kelly, is that what is going on?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're going to give you 10 minutes, and you have four folks.
Myself and three others.
Yep, so we'll give you 10 minutes. And when you're, I'll give you a two minute and a 30 second. And then I'd also just like to mention to folks, both calling in and in chambers, we were able to start a little bit late, unfortunately, so I know that there's two main topics that we're going to hear from different groups. So if, you know, somebody is speaker, you agree with them, that's fine, but certainly we'll make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak, but in order to be more efficient, if you agree with the speaker, we can just run through the list. All right, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Greg Kelly. I believe you need an address, correct?
No, you're good.
Okay. And I'm here to speak about the Garrison Street access that allows access to St. Jude Catholic Church. That's at the northwest corner of Garrison and Florida, if you're not familiar. Sanctuary Park is on the corner, and our church, St. Jude, is to the west of it. Garrison access has been there, well, St. Jude has been there for 55 years. Our church was dedicated in 1967. At that point in time, I believe the Garrison Road came down, stopped shy of Florida, was, didn't access that yet, swung to the north of the park, and then south through what is now our parking lot. Okay, and it ended at Florida. So it was utilized from that point in time onward. The road is used by our parishioners, numbers about 1,200 families strong, when our church functions principally, weekend masses, and picnics and other events. We have 35,000 square feet of building on our premises. That'll relate to something I'll comment on in a moment. To my understanding, the city in 1973 purchased the ground that now became the corner of Garrison in Florida. So that was 1973, so six years following the completion of our church. And in '75, they apparently, I believe, purchased the ground that is now Sanctuary Park. So they were eight years following this. City took possession, I would say, subject to the understanding that we had been there, we had utilized the access, and I would think that would be recognized, and it was recognized for 55 years. I would think that that use should supersede any provisions that are in the city charter. And I think there's a gentleman that will follow me that will comment on that a little bit further. In the letter that all of you should have received, we sent a letter, we sent an email as well. I contributed extensively to that letter. And the first bullet point, I'm a commercial real estate broker, I've been one for nearly 30 years, and the first bullet point, I incorrectly stated adverse possession when I meant to say prescriptive easement. So my error on that. Prescriptive easement is probably everybody knows, is when a one party openly and actively, and the word is notoriously, utilizes a property continuously uninterrupted for the statutory period of 18 years or more. That's Colorado law, which we've far and away exceeded that at 55 years. I know that that doesn't apply once you're dealing with a government property, governmental property. I believe the term is exclusive easement, so there still is law that speaks to our rights that we've used it, and we should be able to continue to use that, that access point. We started for many years with three access points to St. Jude premises. When Kendrick Lake Elementary School was rebuilt, they decided for safety reasons they would close off one of the accesses, access points off of Hoyt Road into our premises. So we went from three to two, and now we're looking at that being reduced to one access point with the potential closing of the Garrison Road access. I know it's been commented on in correspondence that I've read that our remaining entryway off of Florida has a median strip in it, so one entranceway, median, one exit. And so that's counted as two means of access, which seems very disingenuous in my mind. I think with us being reduced to only potentially one means of access, the possibility of safety issues arising, if we had an incident occur at the church, be it fire, be it, churches are in the spotlight these days for many unfortunate things, if something happened, were to happen there, we would have a whole population of people from our church trying to exit onto Florida. At the same time, emergency vehicles and police officers would be trying to access with their brand new cameras on their vest. And I think that just sets us up for safety problems. In a recent review of the St. Jude facilities by the Fire Department, so they just came out to see our facilities, had nothing to do with this, they were stunned to hear that we were losing that access point. These were gentlemen, they're not the heads of the Fire Department, the Fire Marshal, anybody, but they were surprised we'd lost the entrance from Kendrick Lakes, and even more surprised that we were going to lose this. They didn't think that was very safe or proper. And excuse me for one second here. I did call the Fire Marshal. I was curious what the Fire Marshal would say, what was the requirement? When did a requirement kick in to have two or greater? And again, we have 35,000 square feet of building. He said, I believe it was 45,000 square feet of building, when that and greater, and you'd have to have two means of entrance exit. So we're below that number. I said frankly, I was surprised at that, and he concurred, but that's the number. 45,000 is a small king super, basically, so that's what it takes to require two means of entrance exit. What else did I want to comment on? I would suggest that just in respect to the park itself, the scenarios that have been presented to us for what's supposed to happen minimizes the use of a very active park. I believe there was only going to be three parking spaces. People would have to park across the street, and I don't know the name of the park on the northeast corner there, baseball fields and such, but people would have to park there and walk over. People would park within St. Jude's premises. There's talk about having to put a fence, staff suggests a fence would be put in. Nonetheless, they would park in St. Jude's premises. We would then be required to be police officers. We would be calling tow trucks to have them moved. We would suffer liability for anything they might do. We don't want to be calling tow trucks on people. We don't want to get into that business. So it leaves us in a very untenable situation, and I don't see any way around that when you only have three parking spaces. We were told, bear with me here as I look through my notes, the city staff did reach out to St. Jude and did try to, had some discussions with us, but the opinion was the decision was already made when we sat down, and staff seems to suggest that because we haven't attempted to meet them halfway, we're not being very good neighbors. No, the decision was made when they sat down, that this was going to be shut down, and hey, what do you want to do once we shut this down? So we have not been responsive in that regard, and it's for the reasons we stated, it shouldn't be closed down. I understand that there's only two, principally two neighbors, that have complained about this, principally two. There are a few others. I'm sure there were many when the school construction was going on, but that's done, and that shouldn't affect things now. But I would invite all of you to pull the correspondence and read the comments. They don't justify shutting down this access point. Beyond that, from what I learned from your city attorney, I believe we would ask you all to make a motion, I think that was the correct answer, once we all finish presenting, that you will discuss this further and hopefully arrive at what we think is the proper and fair and neighborly decision. And if I could do one last thing, just so it's all clear, all St. Jude folks, folks that are here to speak about this matter, if you could at least raise your hand so we could see what the presence is. Thank you. And I do know that many folks have written in and emailed and so on, and I'm sure many more would like to. So hopefully, we're not wearing you out. We just want your attention, and we would like this addressed. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I'll read through this list, and again, just to reemphasize, we've received a lot of correspondence, and so we'd like to keep some uniqueness to the comments if they differ. That'd be great. So next, I have John Wery, W E H R I. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel, for letting us appear. My comments will be brief. I'm pretty much right on the same page as Mr. Kelly mentioned. My name is John Wery. I have been a parishioner there at St. Jude for, I think, 17 years, and my children both attended Kendrick Lakes Elementary. So I've been in that area many, many times, of course, and many days I've actually used all three access points, as was previously mentioned. And of course, we've already noticed the inconvenience of having the one access point taken away, kind of understand why the school did that. One point I think I would like to add is if there was an emergency situation, that security gate from the school would likely be the first thing that's opened. So shutting down this second access point to St. Jude also shuts down another access point in an emergency situation for the school. And since that road is already there, I mean, it seems, it doesn't seem like a logical thing to do to close it down, especially when you consider the benefits of having it there. For the church, especially on the weekends, of course, it caused traffic issues in and out of the parking lot, and then the possibility of emergency situations that we all know too well. That's really all I really have to say, so I would just like you to reconsider closing that access road, and thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you. So I'll go ahead and read the next. So I'll go ahead and read the next three. So I have, I think, Marge Utes, Linda Geese, and Katie Gill. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Thank you for letting me speak. My issue is with numbers. From what Greg has said and what I've heard, there are like two neighbors that are opposed to St. Jude people having access to this, and there are like 1,200 families that do use this. And the issue has been brought up by everybody who's spoken before me about the safety issue. And all of you are on this council because the city of Lakewood believes in voting, and because you receive the most votes, you are sitting on this council now. And I'm hoping that you will take into consideration 1,200 families and two neighbors. Thank you for hearing me out.
Great, thank you. And then we have Katie, Jenny Shone, and then Matt.
I'm going to have to move this down because I'm short. No way around that. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My conversation is going to be on the topic of the Bear Creek Lake Park and the water that is, that the Army Corps of Engineers has decided that that's a perfect place to hold the water for Berthoud, Decono, Brighton. I don't think any of it's coming to Lakewood, but to me, I think it's a very difficult task to see that beautiful lake and the park that we have there for so many years. When I was a kid, and I don't think anybody in this room probably knows it, but there was a trailer park down there. And I know that because my grandmother lived there. It got wiped out in the flood of '65, and that's how we came up with the dam for Bear Creek Lake Park. It's also for Chatfield. However, this is a concern that I have. One of the things that my family has done forever is that we have utilized that park beautifully. We've kayaked, we've biked, we've hiked. My daughter teaches little girls that are five years old to 14 how to ride their dirt bikes, their bicycles, around the park itself and on the dirt paths. And this is called Little Bellas. Little Bellas is going to lose their path that they ride on, all the different paths, up and down, all over. And that's actually something that my daughter wanted to speak at as well, but she couldn't be here tonight. But we've been really looking at a park that has been used so much, not just from our own people that live in the city of Lakewood, and it's from people that come all over. They realize that it's such a great place to go kayaking, bicycling. We've had birthday parties over there, we've got a great swim beach. Of course, at Soda Lakes, Soda Lakes also used to be a country club because my mother was a waitress at that ugly brown building up above the water at Soda Lakes. But I've got some history here. The question that I ask is if not just people that are in Ward Five or not people that are in Ward One, not people that are just in any ward, we're asking for assistance to get the word out, to try to get the Army Corps of Engineers to please, please, find another location to hold their water. This is one of the times that I would say not in my backyard, and it has literally for years been in my backyard because I've spent a lot of time there. So if we could get everyone here, we would be more than happy to get you a yard sign, a sticker, just anything that we can get the word out. And I just ask for assistance on that. And Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you've spent some time there as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie? And then Jenny, and then Matt. Good evening.
Good evening. I hope you don't mind if I take off my mask for this.
You're fine.
Well, thank you again for hearing me again. I'm going to try not to repeat things that I've said to you previously. So I'm Katie Gill, I'm with Save Bear Creek Lake Park. And I also want to thank you for putting that webpage together. The Lakewood Bear Creek Lake Expansion webpage is very informative, and it is in fact more informative than the website for the Department of Natural Resources that's appearing on the signs that the Army Corps of Engineers placed in the park. So anyway, I appreciate that. And I realize your leverage is limited, this isn't your process, and that we're still in the feasibility stage. And I'm pushing on this hard right now because this early stage in the feasibility stage is when we have an opportunity to, for our concerns to be heard in terms of the Corps of Engineers and the momentum that we'll be building there. So they've expressed to me that they want to hear from us early in the process, not later, which makes sense. Awareness is spreading, concern and opposition to the expansion are growing. My website is blowing up, I can't even keep up with it. You may have seen the Nine News story the other day. You've heard we have yard signs, and I know they shouldn't be in the right of way. And I also want to address that some people support the idea. They say, "I want a bigger lake, just like Chatfield," is what they say. And I think there's a little misunderstanding about what that larger lake would be like. Chatfield State Park is 5,300 acres. Bear Creek Lake Park excluding the golf course is only 1,800 acres. So it's not even a place where a Chatfield-like facility could exist. The largest expansion being considered would result in a lake that is less than a third the size of Chatfield reservoir on a good day. And yet, that expansion would wipe out 615 acres of the core of the park if they were to go to the full 20,000-acre feet, that is one of their alternatives. That would wipe out a mile of Bear Creek, a whole riparian ecosystem. Given the low dependable inflow from Bear Creek and the shallow topography of the site, a larger reservoir would fluctuate significantly, and that would lead to sort of a bathtub-ring effect of mud flats. And the flowing wooded riparian corridors, the shady creekside trails, the wildlife habitat, those things cannot be mitigated in the way that they mitigated the effects of the Chatfield reallocation. I want to leave with the city clerk some beautiful drawings here that were done by an artist, Crystal Beckel, and they just give an image of what's inside the corridor, what's inside the inundation zone. And they say a picture is worth 1,000 words. I tend to give you 1,000 words every now and then, and these pictures are beautiful, and I think they'll help you understand what people are so concerned about. I see my time is over.
It is.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. All right, Jenny?
Mayor, I spoke to Jenny and Matt earlier. They were here for a different item that'll be addressed at a different meeting. They were here to hear the massage ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
So we will follow up with them individually.
That was your sign language earlier.
That was my sign language earlier, and I don't know sign language.
Well, I knew something. All right, Lynn Knopson? Lynn here?
This is Bob Thompson.
Okay, great. We'll just bring you both down. And then after that, I have Judson Hopkins, Mike Bida, and then the last one's 1868, Lamar Court. Looks like Dennis and Kathy, maybe? Good evening. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak. My name is Denise Thompson, and this is my husband.
I'm Robert Thompson.
And we've been residents of Lakewood for 38 years and members of St. Jude's for that same length of time. And I'll just, everything that Greg said is exactly how we feel about the entrance being, and you know, for 38 years, everything's been going fine in Lakewood. This is the first time we've ever been here. I'm kind of nervous. This is the first time we've ever been here because it's the first time we've had a problem that we really feel very strongly about, that that road should be, not be closed, that there should be the entrance. Do you want to say anything else?
Yes. I'm not certain what initiated this action. I'd love to hear it, not asking you to tell me. Hey, I've been here since 1983. I was transferred here from Pittsburgh with the Bureau of Mines out at the Federal Center. And after 16 and a half years with them, I spent 16 and a half years with the Forest Service. So I'm pretty familiar with the workings in government and society and people and all kinds of people. In federal government, you meet almost everything. I, okay, okay. The safety bothers me a great deal. I was in the engineering division of the Forest Service, and we would cover the forest ranger districts and restrooms and everything else, water safety, water processing plants. I can see that there could be some desperate emergency when we would need to have access to egress and for the Fire Department to get there and the police and the ETs. It's putting a lot of people in a lot of danger, and I think it's creating a difficult situation for the city of Lakewood, County of Jefferson, all involved authorities. Again, like my wife said, we agree with all the things that have been said. We used to come in from the west side.
Hoyt Street.
Hoyt Street side. And up until a few years back, the only thing to keep you from going through was during school, they would put out cones. This is understandable to control traffic and for the safety of the kids. I wish they could open that up again, maybe as a trade-off even.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
No, you're welcome. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out. Good evening.
Good evening, Lakewood City Council. I appreciate your time. My name is Judd Hopkins, and I am a resident of Ward Four. I appreciate your time this evening. I'd like to share with you a correspondence sent from a city employee named Kit Newland, who I believe works for the city manager's office, although I could be mistaken, I apologize. There is no title here. In this correspondence, Kit Newland refers to the city charter, and by saying, "By city charter, parkland is not permitted to be used for any purpose except for the park, for park or recreation uses." Here is the language, and she cites 14.3B. Except for those parts of utility system or systems no longer useful to the operation of a utility system, there shall be no lease or sale of waterworks, gasworks, geothermal systems, solar systems, electrical distribution systems, or other public utilities, or any real property used or held for open space or park purposes without the question of such lease or sale. And the terms and consideration therefore being submitted to a vote of registered electors of the city at a special or regular municipal election and favorable vote by the majority of those registered electors voting therein. I don't, I'm not an attorney, and I know that none of you are either, or maybe some of you are, but I don't read in the language anywhere where it says anything about the use of a park and recreation spot for, this is speaking purely to oil and gas leases, this is energy distribution. And this is what is being cited to us as the reasoning for this happening. Not to disagree with my friend Greg there, but I have a little bit different of a timeline as well. So the deed that I have for the acquisition of Sanctuary Park is dated in 1977. As you heard earlier, our parish was introduced in 1967, so it predates the park by 10 years. We know that the road was there before the park and the church. The deed that is granting the city and Jefferson County Sanctuary Park was attained through condemnation. Condemnation is a little bit different than imminent domain, whereas imminent domain is typically something that is reserved for highway right-of-way. I believe that by taking this road away, we are violating the spirit of the acquisition of that original deed because it is no longer for the good of the public. And I believe that that is why the road was never taken out, is because the spirit of that original deed has to meet that for condemnation, which is for the good of the public. Thank you.
Great, thank you. If anybody else wishes to speak, if you haven't signed up, please go ahead and come down and
Good evening, members of council, Seaman Hodgson, Chief McCaskey, and all the other members of staff. Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the Sanctuary Park access road off of Garrison known as Old Garrison Road. Now, when I finished my term on council, I had resolved to avoid city council meetings at all costs and instead enjoy my retirement. Well, that didn't last even three months, and here I am, despite my best intentions. But I'm here because of how important I think this issue really is. I am a member of St. Jude Church and often use Old Garrison Road. Now, with all due respect to our city staff, as elected council members, I want to remind you that you have two, among many, two very important responsibilities. The first one is to represent the interests of your constituents, the people who elected you, the people to whom you promised your allegiance during your campaign. This means doing what's best for them, not the administration. As a member of this body, you're a member of a legislative branch. It is your responsibility to act as a check and balance to the executive branch, to the administration. The administration does not always get it right. That means that the administration has to answer to you, not the other way around. Tonight, you may be asked to exercise that check and balance authority, and you should not be afraid to do so because you will be fulfilling your responsibility to review the actions of the administration. That is your job. There are many unanswered questions about this proposed closure, and I agree with a lot of the things that have been said so far. It has been used for, by the public for some 60 or more years, long before the city obtained the property, and since then, the city has used this road, they've improved it, and they've maintained it. Why has the city, after all this time, suddenly taken this position that it is illegal? You need to ask that question. Second, the city claims that the city charter prohibits the use of the road because it's an open space. Yet, the city proposed just a few months ago to continue to allow us to use the road and the public to use the road if we put locked gates in place and that we're managed by St. Jude Church. Isn't that a contradiction on its face to allow the road to be used for over 60 years, turn around and propose its continued use, and then turn around and say it's illegal? Other members of the public use this Old Garrison Road besides the members of the church to access the west side of the park in order to be able to use the trails in the park. Can the city really with a straight face say that the road is not being used for park purposes? So I will say as new council, I'll wrap this up. So I will say as new council, I'll wrap this up, I urge you to assert your authority now and exercise your power and duty by developing a public policy against the closing of this road. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. All right, nobody else in chambers? Okay, can we move to the online? And I guess you're going to have to run the timer still, once they start, and then I'll still do the...
Yes.
Okay. So for our folks online, if you wish to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. If it's not already raised, when your number, last four digits, are called, please give us your name and address or name and the ward for the record, as we have done for regular public comment in chambers. And I know there were some folks that wanted for us to try to go in order. That's out of my hands because I can't see, but we'll try our best.
Call ending in 7593.
Good evening, 7593. Press *6 to unmute. Caller 7593? Okay, we'll go ahead and move to the next, please.
This is Ruth Seraphini.
Okay, good evening.
There was a little delay.
Are you 7593?
Yes, I am.
Okay, perfect. And if you can just use one device, that would be perfect.
I have one device. Is it echoing?
There you go. Nope, you're good. I just thought with the delay maybe, you're good, go ahead.
Ruth Seraphini, and you need the address, you said?
Or ward.
I live in Denver, 80219, so I'm not a Lakewood resident. But I feel very passionate about the movement to save Bear Creek Lake Park. I'm an avid runner. I have two children. I'm born and raised on homestead in Alaska, and I live in Denver, which is busy and polluted and crowded. And Bear Creek Lake Park is 15 minutes away, and I bring my children there in the summer when it's 100 degrees, and they get to play in the shade in a stream and not hear traffic and not be crowded and be actually able to connect to nature. We go there at least once a week. I've already written letters, and I plan to write more to the Army Corps of Engineers. I understand your power is limited. But speaking for my family and for many of us in the running community who rely on those shaded trails in the summers especially, I just ask and encourage everyone to do everything they can to please do not let them flood our park. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we also have an annual pass, and we get the annual pass every year because that is the hands-down best park on the Front Range that we have easy access to. And there's no other place that has all of those miles of trails, shaded riparian areas. We did a lake, a river walk with my kids where we just ambled upstream, and we saw three deer. We heard the wind blow a tree down, you know, probably a quarter mile from us, but we could hear it, or maybe it was less than that. But I mean, it is wild out there, and it is so close to Denver. I just really feel like we should do everything we can to protect it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, next.
Call ending in 3887.
Good evening, 3887. If you could give us your name and address or name and ward, we'll get you going.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, good evening.
Hello, this is Karen Gorday, Ward Five. Thank you, Mayor Paul and City Council, for allowing me to speak today. In full transparency, I'm a member of the Lakewood Advisory Commission. However, what I'm about to say is not the opinion of the LAC, rather my opinion as a private citizen of Lakewood. I recently received a copy of the Looking at Lakewood newspaper, and I'm concerned with comments from Councilwoman Mary Jansen, which I quote, "In order to get more feedback and engagement, I'd like to create a counselor's cabinet comprised of two representatives from each precinct in Ward Five. Cabinet representatives would be asked to keep current on council items. Periodically, we'll provide a polling link regarding a topic which the cabinet representatives would share with the neighborhood by next door or other means to get feedback." I also attended the Ward Five meeting on Saturday, February 5th, however, I was unable to raise my concerns as we ran out of time. My concerns are as follows. Number one, every citizen can keep up to date on council items by going out to the Lakewood.org or Lakewood Speaks website. Most council members also have a newsletter they send out if they choose to subscribe to. Number two, why are the applications for these cabinet positions on your personal website versus the Lakewood.org site? What is the screening process for these positions? I'm guessing that since people apply to your website, then you're overseeing the appointment of these positions. How are you going to ensure that there is diversity of thought in these positions? Number three, Lakewood elections are supposed to be nonpartisan. Why do you want two representatives from each precinct in Ward Five? I used to be a precinct organizer, and the moment you go down to the precinct level, then you have politicized Ward Five. We in Lakewood are divided enough, and this does not do anything but further divide us. Number four, your words are, "We'll provide a polling link." Who is "we"? I would ask that if you're meeting with members of this cabinet, then does the Colorado Sunshine laws or open meeting laws apply here? As well, where is the ordinance passed by city council giving you permission to change the structure of the city government? And number five, finally, it's literally your job to talk to and listen to your constituents to find out their questions and concerns and not delegate this to what appears to be your cronies. We need less cronyism in government and need our elected officials to listen to their constituents. And one suggestion may be to take less time for introductions at the ward meetings, which during November was 45 minutes, and in the February meeting was over 10 minutes, and maybe allow more time for us to provide you with our concerns. I hope that the mayor or city attorney will look into how these newly created counselor cabinet positions fit in with the existing structure of the city government and our shared goal of bringing new voices, not amplification of existing voices into city government. Thank you.
Call ending in 5361.
Good evening, caller 5361. Give us your name and ward or address, we'll get you going.
Hey, good evening, council. This is David from District Nine of Denver. Just wanted to say congratulations on finally getting body cameras. Is there going to be any sort of repercussions for folks when they don't or if they don't turn them on? What kind of policies do we have in place to make sure that the rules are followed all the time? Because, you know, we've had, a lot of the violence we've had in the last few years hasn't been from necessarily from the people, it's been from the police. So how are we going to make sure that they don't just skirt the rules so they don't have to be held accountable? And then also, a lot of money is paid for these systems, and they're explaining that the footage goes online. How do we make sure that the CORA requests are going to be filled? In Denver, they kind of just skirt, they lie and say they don't know how to find the stuff. How are we going to make sure that you guys do, don't follow Denver's terrible practices when it comes to this? It's just some of the questions I have for y'all. Thank you.
Ross Olman.
Good evening. Ross Olman? Ross, you're up.
Good evening, sorry for the delay. My name is Ross Olman, and I'm a part of Ward Two. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Okay, well, thank you for hearing me out. I know it's late, and y'all are working on Valentine's Day, which I'm sure is a trouble at home, but thank you for hearing me out. I live on West Eighth Avenue, and there are quite a few people who live or who commute on my street, the Through Street, but I know generally throughout the neighborhood near Sixth and Sheridan, there are quite a few neighbors that are worried about the 30 mile an hour speed limit through the neighborhood and also the means of which people are able to address speeding. There was a speed study done, which has fairly stringent requirements for people to petition for a speed hump or speed signs that let people know when they're speeding, things like that. So if, this is the first time I've ever appeared at something like this, I was hoping for more information about how that could possibly be changed or whether council is considering lowering the speed limit throughout our neighborhoods and also whether if I were able to get the neighbors to be able to pay for a sign, whether council would consider putting that up. So any information would be helpful. If that's not a possibility, I would just like you all to consider that the speed limit on our street is 30, where it's also 30 on Colfax, which is far different from a quiet neighborhood street.
Great, thank you. And since this is your first time, we'll circle back at the very end of public comment and try to address a couple of these.
Next is Liberty Freak.
All right. Good evening, you are on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for giving me the time, calling from Ward Three. I just wanted to say to the city attorney's office, when they came out there talking about the Constitution and everything, I just wanted everyone to know that please let us not be fooled. Let us remember that this city chief, which everybody's trying to get accolades now because they're coming in early with the cameras, he wrote a letter and made sure that the union and their private drinking club, you know, sent them all a letter, you know, to put away a man at maximum penalty because he was calling his officers' names. Okay, let us not forget that the Constitution is not at the forefront of this city, okay? And the civil liability that the city is facing is horrific. Okay, I wanted to thank Ms. Springsteen for all of her hard work in being able to divulge all this craziness going on with ketamine and these departments in these cities. And I also want to thank her because really, she'd probably be the real reason why you guys are getting these body cameras early. Let us not be fooled that I know personally, and many others know, that you guys were fighting this to the very end. And if you had any kind of loophole whatsoever, you would not have body cameras because you guys were very proud not to have body cameras. So let the public not be fooled about all these kind words and all these embellishments and how wonderful they are, because the truth is that I believe that the Constitution is really not in Lakewood's best interest. I mean, I want to thank you guys also because, as a matter of fact, I too am suing the City of Lakewood for, you know, and maybe we can make some case law here on, you know, the right to record police. I'm not, I'm sorry, I apologize. Let me say that correctly. I am not suing the City of Lakewood, I am suing a police officer in his own capacity from the Lakewood Police Department. But, you know, I just wanted to get that out there, and I wanted you guys to be transparent. Hopefully, these body cameras are not going to be muted when they are conspiring together on how to construct a crime to be able to arrest someone, or when they're on cell phones constructing, you know, a crime, because usually a lot of people are arrested for made-up crimes. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thanks for all your hard work, Ms. Anita Springsteen, and also Free Eric Brand, political prisoner being held in prison for speech. Hashtag Free Eric Brand.
All right, next.
Joshua Comden.
Good evening, Mr. Comden.
Hello. I'm from Ward One, and I'm very happy to see a lot of this participation tonight. It's unusual, but I really like it. Even though I have to wait a good long time, I think it's always very good that tons of people are calling in to talk about what's important to them. So I'm calling again about like affordable housing, specifically in Lakewood. This morning, I got an email from Zillow saying, oh, here's 10 homes you might be interested in. I saw one that was really interesting. It was $312,000, three-bed, two-bath, 1,900 square feet, and I thought, wow, that's a really good deal. I mean, it's in Denver, just barely in Denver. And so I look into it, and it's on something called a community land trust. And unfortunately, I don't qualify because I make too much money for that, but I really like the idea because what ends up happening is there's like a nonprofit that owns the land so that people that want to own homes aren't necessarily doing land speculation in addition to owning a home. They get to be in a good location without having to worry about speculating on land, and they get to live in an affordable home. And I'm hoping that maybe we could do something like that in Lakewood. The one that I specifically was talking about was called Elevation Community Land Trust, and they have a article on their website about them doing something with Aurora back in 2019, and I think another one with either Loveland or Fort Collins or something like that. And I think it would be really cool if this is something that Lakewood would look into so that we can at least locally deal with our affordable housing prices here. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Call ending in 3353.
Good evening, 3353. Give us your name and address or ward, we'll start you. I think we heard you. You're up. Going once. 3353?
Call ending in 9628.
Good evening, 9628. To unmute.
Yes, my name is Pat Cherian, and I'm Ward Four. And I'm calling regarding the Garrison entrance that goes into St. Jude's parking lot area. And I also have been with the parish since its inception and have used that road many times. I find it very convenient, and I'm concerned about the safety issue if we don't have another exit to leave in case of any disaster or anything happening there. I've also used that entrance going to Sanctuary Park and have parked at St. Jude's lot to access the park because there is no other parking spots on Garrison or Florida to go there. And if I have my daughter with me who's handicapped, it's not convenient to try to go across Garrison to the ball field and then come back again any other way. So fortunate to have our church parking lot there. So just to hope that that will be considered when looking at that, that safety and just the convenience of it as well. And thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Call ending in 1960.
Good evening, caller 1960. Unmute and give us your name and address or ward, we'll start you.
You are unmuted.
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Hi, this is Kamal Stewart from Ward Four. I've been a longtime resident of Lakewood, and thank you for letting me comment. I have become more disappointed in our city with each council meeting. Mr. Paul, I'd like to say some very trite words to you, but Jesus won't let me. Mr. Paul, I'd like to say some very chiseled words to you, but Jesus won't let me. I'd like to know why haven't almost all of the issues presented by citizens in this forum, the call-in method, never answered for any means, any reason. It's very interesting. I'd like to know why hasn't the majority of council not stood with Councilor Springsteen in the steps she's taking to make this city better? Ms. Council, Councilor Springsteen should be your employee of the month for the last 20 months at least. The Garrison assets point to my church is very important for safety reasons. It seems like people elected to keep us safe should be able to see that. What would happen, young council, when a bunch of old people tried to cram all of their old cars into one metal lane with a fire hot on our behind? Ms. City Attorney, is this the legal advice we have to pay you for? Mr. Paul, why did you withhold that information on that pretty council loan? Ms. Springsteen, thank you very much for your service. If we had someone of your fortitude, your kindness several years ago, and had these cameras, the person who killed one of my grandsons would now be in jail instead of still employed by Lakewood Police Department. Now, council, let's all tackle that corruption. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Next.
Call ending in 4375.
Good evening, 4375, you are up. Star six to unmute.
Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to just honor and acknowledge the person who just shared before us, given that that was a vulnerable story and, you know, words that were spoken. I think, you know, I think many people echo those sentiments, but they've, you know, for, by whatever means, whether intentional or not, have been systematically silenced. I think that we, we can, we, I with our integrity and that's about it. So as a council, I encourage everyone to consider that continuing to do the same things over and over, the same way over and over, continuing to uphold the status quo is not going to solve the problem. There are no new problems, so we need new solutions to the problem. And if we continue to try to solve things the way we always have, and we know that it's been wildly ineffective, then we're not going to get anywhere as a society. And we, we have some pretty, pretty blatant and unparalleled disparities in the Denver metro area right now. So any denying that is a red flag for me, and I see a lot of that going on on this council and by the city of Lakewood. I do have a question about, about, you know, the summer of violence. You know, the summer of violence, my, my professor did a study at the University of Denver, his name's Paul Colomy. And he actually, he proved, he went through, and he proved that the summer of violence, that the summer before it and the summer after it were actually more violent than that one, and that it largely was a media. You know, he, he, he looked at how the media influences perceptions of violence. So at a time like this, when we're considering body cams, I just think it's important to understand how the narratives are, you know, contrived and influence our perception of things. Thank you.
All right, next.
Next is Michael.
Okay, Michael, if you give us your address or ward, we'll get you going.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Michael Brankin, and I'm Ward One resident and a professor of chemical engineering at the School of Mines. I'm here on behalf of Clean Energy Lakewood to advocate for a larger investment in sustainability efforts, especially in light of a recent national guidance document in my field. But first, I'd like to start by recognizing your own contributions to this effort so far. As an active citizen, I've taken note of the council's efforts toward improving sustainability over the years. You all have moved our city away from frivolous notions like bringing in so-called expert to debate the very existence of climate change, to taking a much more serious tone and a long-term view of the city's response to this very real phenomenon. I would like to thank the members of the Planning Commission, as well as the Board of Commissioners, Adjustment, and the fine folks of Planning and Zoning for the Article 13 Amendment, which we will ensure, which will ensure not only more sustainable building practices, but also a more secure source of revenue that could be directed towards sustainability efforts in our city. Thank you all for making sustainability a priority. I am pleased that this body has taken sustainability seriously enough to create and staff an office, but I and many others of my fellow residents believe it's time to start funding this office with a more significant budget so that they may start and continue more impactful programs, not just expand their staff. You'll hear many suggestions from my friends at Clean Energy Lakewood for specific programs tonight, but I'd like to speak briefly about the bigger picture and underscore just why it is so important that this body consider more seriously funding the sustainability efforts of our city. In a pre-print of the study to be published this year entitled New Directions for Chemical Engineering 2022, over 60 co-authors representing both academia and industry have contributed to a new vision for my field, which originally developed out of petroleum engineering in the 1950s and has since grown to encompass oil and gas, as well as a broad range of industries ranging from plastics to pharmaceuticals and high-end semiconductors. The last time such a document was produced was in 1998, nearly 25 years ago. So please understand me when I say this is not taken lightly. The study IDs five broad areas that chemical engineers should pursue in research for the coming decades. One, decarbonization of energy systems. Two, sustainable energy engineering solutions for environmental systems. Three, engineering targeted medicines. Four, flexible manufacturing and the circular economy. And five, novel and improved materials for the 21st century. You'll note that three of these directly address sustainability efforts that we will suggest tonight: decarbonization, sustainable environmental systems, and the circular economy, in other words, recycling. But the last one, novel and improved materials, also includes a stipulation about life cycle considerations and therefore relates also to recycling efforts. So all of these focus areas, with the exception of medicine, are directly related to the broader issue of sustainability. And it's not just chemical engineers, even the Army came up with a sustainability plan that was published less than a week ago. I'm heartened to see so many exuberant new faces at the council, as much as I am to see that many of the familiar faces are ones we have lent an open mind, who have lent an open-minded ear to our advocacy efforts before. And I'm optimistic that this body will see fit this year to bring our city's efforts in line with our goals and fund the sustainability office such that they can begin to run programs that will be vital to our citizens. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Next is Marie.
Good evening, Marie. Ward Five.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Thank you very much. Good evening, city council members, and thank you for your public service. Sustainability in our city is in its adolescence and approaching adulthood. It's time for some self-reflection and basic reevaluation. We need to focus on what will deliver the biggest steps fastest. You can think in terms of where the most money is being spent in the city. That's often in new construction or in new transportation, not new per se, but in transportation and infrastructure development. It's key to make sure all investments are taking the city in the right direction, not making any big problems worse. You can make the future sustainability and our quality of life in Lakewood central in your decision-making, keeping a vital few areas in mind: air pollution, clean energy, and some rigor in requirements for new investment. And I'm very grateful for those who spoke on, on behalf of Bear Creek Lake Park, too. Last summer, we had the worst air pollution and ozone on the planet one day. Our region buys with Metro LA and the Central Valley as a top three region for ozone from fossil fuel combustion nationally, which causes many health problems. No investment in our city should be going to what makes our air pollution worse and digs this hole deeper. One area is building construction. We should be allowing no new building on gas. We now know that leakage from the pipe system, whether stoves are on or not, compromises people's health. Building electric, not gas, is affordable and a cost saver if done during construction, and it's very expensive to do later. Let's not incur these debts and worse health for Lakewood residents. Clean renewable electricity. Our electricity is still the biggest, fastest area for us to decarbonize, and utility monopolies like Xcel still have the biggest impact on what can be done here. And Xcel is not proceeding rapidly like it should. They've declined to shift towards solar and storage faster. Back in 2017, they passed over 95% of the plentiful record-setting bids they received just because they wouldn't be able to own as much of it. Can the city generate renewable electricity to cover its needs on its own rooftops and property? If so, the city's going to be able to control its bills and resilience into the future. It's time to check this out fully. Lakewood can also pass a resolution speaking up for community choice energy against Xcel's rate increases and continually expanded profit-taking and too much emphasis on big centralized generation, which depends on transmission and is vulnerable to disruption during extreme weather, instead of more on local storage in micro, solar, solar storage and microgrids. And transportation investments. It's great to have Jenny aboard in engineering. We need to see how we can extend safer, more protective, more protected active transportation, biking and walking in all of the projects that are coming up. Every resurfacing project that's going to involve.
Wrap up your comments, please.
Sure. We need to improve our plans and designs to compete for grants, and we want to support Dr. Coggin getting funding sooner rather than later for the 3.2 billion in identified.
All right, your time is up. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We got a long line, so if people could keep it tight, that'd be great. Next.
Call ending in 4347.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, 4347. If you give us your name.
Mayor Paul and councilors, my, my name is Ron Horstman, and I live in Ward Five. Thank you for the opportunity to share some thoughts on helping make Lakewood a more sustainable city. I want to congratulate you all for recognizing and pressing sustainability issues for the progress we've already made, especially regarding Article 13 Amendment and the enhanced development menu. But our work is not done. I want to stress that the Clean Energy Lakewood Committee wants to continue to assist city staff in any way we can. Together, we can do more. The existing solar and demand-side management rebates are great because they stimulate efficiency and renewable energy, and they were formulated to a thorough stakeholder process, not just Xcel Energy. These rebates have significant impacts on the cost of these measures. I invite Lakewood to double down on these rebates because it is a way to extend the reach of these rebates further into the existing building stock in our community. Energy that is efficiently or inappropriately used means that fewer dollars are available for other purposes. This in turn constrains the economic activity of our community and limits the job creation process. Let me describe a community-wide energy efficiency renewable energy plan for Lakewood. It has two parts. First, an energy use profile is developed for Lakewood. Second, based on the profile, the most cost-effective energy investments will be identified for Lakewood. Here are some questions the profile will help answer. Number one, how does the average per capita income compare percentage-wise to that of the United States? Number two, does the average resident of Lakewood use more energy or less energy than the average resident of the United States? Number three, what percent of their income do Lakewood residents spend on energy compared to the national average? Number four, what percentage of Lakewood's energy does Xcel Energy provide, and where does the remainder come from? Number five, what percent of Lakewood's energy is consumed by each sector, commercial, industrial, residential, and transportation sectors, as compared to the national areas? And lastly, an energy program that reduces the percentage of income Lakewood's residents spend on it for energy would result in how much yearly savings per person, or about how much for the community as a whole. Based on these answers, Lakewood would know where to invest their budget dollars to get the most bang for their buck. Studies show that every dollar saved or retained in Lakewood's economy will roll over four to seven times before leaving the economy. This is called the multiplier effect, and has proven to be one of the best, biggest benefits of energy programs. These programs often help lower-income segments of society the most because it has the most impact for them, and they spend more of these dollars saved locally on groceries and local services. We congratulate Lakewood for its recognition of the need to act now. The availability of funds to assist these, with these actions makes now a good time to update Lakewood's sustainability plan and apply for grant funds to help put the proposed changes into action. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Great, thank you. Next.
Call ending in 2542.
Good evening, 2542. You are up. If you give us your name, we'll get you going.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and city council member. This is Lauren Mayon from Ward One. Now the ward would be two great sustainability champions on council. I was supposed to close comments for Clean Energy Lakewood, but we, we've lost a lot of people between the AV issue, these presentations before citizens could make comments. So, yeah, about 100 hours of work went into preparing for tonight. We're, we're sorry to see it cut so much. But anyway, in recent years, with a mildly green council, Lakewood already achieved very good things: sustainability building code addition, tree canopy efforts, bike lanes, additional sustainability employees. And now soon, this program our group supports wholeheartedly, the enhanced development menu, approved, developed by staff and improved by the Planning Commission, and hopefully you can improve it soon. At this point, system will invite greener construction and also levy some fees from larger developments, revenues that can go toward incentives for existing residents to reduce their energy bills. There, there are very many benefits to installing solar and energy efficiency in Lakewood. Some of the other presenters have highlighted them. With my background in finance, MBA, and business creation, I can see no better folks for our town than transforming from a logic of consumption and depletion of resources to circular, sustainable relationship with environment that sustains our lives. Nothing with a better return on investment. With its council form of government, Lakewood is tricky to govern. To put it simply, the majority of you must agree on a strategic priority, or change is pretty much disabled. Yet here we have an extraordinary economic development opportunity, and an urgent need to become more sustainable. Very.
All right, you there?
And I'll name three threads here. One, engage into an update of the sustainability plan. It's time, and you can complete during the two-year tenure of this green council. Two, increase authority, the means, the budget, and the staff of the sustainability department. To give you sample benchmarks, our town's wonderful sustainability team has less than four full-time persons, and towns of similar size and objectives, like Fort Collins or Boulder, have 36 people and a chief sustainability officer and much bigger sustainability budgets to implement programs. And then three is to establish sustainability as a top strategic priority for the city management, setting concrete goals for the various facets of sustainability in our town, that's tree canopy, recycling, slash outposting, transportation and bikes, clean energy, community solvents, energy efficiency, water conservation, and greening up municipal buildings. Lakewood Clean Energy is very excited to know we now have green council. This gives us high hopes, and we very much look forward to fruits of your strategic retreat. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next.
Call ending in 3006.
Good evening, caller 3006. Good evening, caller 3006. 3006, you're up. Star six to unmute.
Call ending in 4824.
Good evening, caller 4824.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Marcus Gallegos. I live in the Lime Apartments on roughly Cothex and Wadsworth. I'm 25 years old. I've lived in Lakewood for almost my whole life. My parents live off of Mississippi and Wadsworth, and my great-grandma bought the house and settled in like decades ago. Anyways, I graduated fromCU Denver in May with a bachelor's of computer science, and so life is going good, and it's time for me to buy a house. Unfortunately, I can't really afford one in Wadsworth, in Lakewood. Right across the street from me, there's a new construction, right by the light rail station, Lakewood-Wadsworth Station. It's full of luxury condos, and as I look at the constructor's website, it looks great. I'd love to live there. But unfortunately, like even though we're building these high-density condos, which is great, there's no affordable option. In fact, when I started attending university, I tried to find affordable housing, and I was rejected because I was a student. And so I think we have a huge issue we need to solve with housing in Lakewood. My family's lived here for decades, and I'm literally being priced out. And then, you know, I was, I had mixed feelings about the growth rate limit passed in 2019. I understand it, but like we have people becoming homeless, and you know, that's not helping. On top of that, the new construction that we are building is not mixed use. Like, why is it only, why is it only living space and not retail space combined? So I think we have a lot of work to do, and hopefully I can continue living here in Lakewood as my family has for generations. Thank you.
Call ending in 3852.
Good evening, caller 3852.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and members of the city council. I'm Dr. Elizabeth Molinar, and I'm a resident of Ward 1. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm an energy anthropologist, and I teach at Regis University, and I am here also to talk to you about sustainability with my fellow friends from Clean Energy Lakewood. Now, most of the things that I wanted to say tonight have been mentioned, and I know you're probably eager to sort of wrap things up, so I'm going to skip through to something that hasn't been said before. I would also like sustainability to be the top one priority, and I would like, in addition to that, for the sustainability department and the city council to come together and always use the sustainability and equity lens when reviewing proposals, plans, and policies, just as we evaluate based on financial feasibility. Sustainability pertains to livability and viability within a community, which necessarily includes social equity. It refers to fair access to resources and opportunities and full participation in the economic, social, political, and cultural life of a community. Poorer people and people of color are disproportionately affected by pollution and climate change. Moreover, using sustainability and equity lens simultaneously with the financial scrutiny lens can be treated as integrated, as sustainability and green solutions frequently are economically advantageous for local communities in the long run as well. So I just wanted to add that to all the other things that have been said already, and let's not treat sustainability as musing their dreams of a select few or something of later concern, but recognize how essential it is for the well-being of our entire community right now. Some others here tonight mentioned all sorts of plans that I am fully supportive of as well, and I would like to add that if anyone wants more elaboration on any of the things that we have mentioned before, please reach out, and we'll provide you with any documentation that you would like to have. And finally, I want to close with one comment that is not necessarily related to this, but that I'm also in support of preserving Bear Creek Lake Park. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Call ending in 9309.
All right, 9309. You are up. 9309.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, yes, hi. Thank you for letting me comment. This is Carrie Saunaborn, Ward 1. I will try and keep it brief as well. I'm a 20-year resident of Lakewood, and I've been an active participant in the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program since its inception, and also now very active with Clean Energy Lakewood. So I'd like to start by thanking the city for increasing its 2022 budget for urban trees and vegetation. So you might wonder, what does this have to do with energy? Well, trees provide enormous benefits. They reduce the cost of doing all kinds of other work, such as stormwater management, air purification, slope stabilization, water retention. They're responsible for producing oxygen, removing CO2 and pollutants, and we've heard about all of these issues, I think, just about all of them earlier. Trees reduce the impact of falling rain and encourage that water to soak into the ground, reduces flooding and erosion, preventing pollution from entering waterways, and as well as providing, you know, pleasant places for people to meet and exercise outdoors. Trees absorb heat and release water vapor, cooling the surrounding air. So trees can even advance environmental and social justice. They provide human health benefits. We've all heard about the benefits of being in nature. Trees encourage people to be outdoors, walking, talking, exercising, so they contribute to healthy lifestyles. They benefit mental health. It's even been shown to help reduce crime and improve property values. Thus, the city of Lakewood should really focus its tree planting in lower-income areas because urban trees are already greatly concentrated in the wealthier neighborhoods. And I did want to thank you for increasing your 2022 budget for urban trees. It's certainly a step in the right direction. As a society, we've not really found a way to put natural capital, such as trees, on the balance sheet as an asset. They only show up as an expense item. So unfortunately, this means trees can often fall to the bottom of many cities' budgets. And please don't let that happen in Lakewood. I, too, want to thank those who spoke earlier about protecting Bear Creek Lake Park. It's an enormous asset for the city. So once again, thank you for increasing the budget for trees in Lakewood, and I urge you to continue with further increases in 2023 and beyond. I, too, have some resources that I can pass on that will give you examples of what other U.S. cities are doing to increase their tree canopy. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Great, thank you.
No one else has their hand raised.
Okay. Anybody else in chambers? All right, I'll go ahead and close public comment at 9:55. Do a quick couple of things, because there's certainly, certainly the churches of interest, and I think there's some questions. But because there's mention of a potential motion, I'm going to just put that under general business. However, all that we have in front of it is a consent agenda, which should go really fast. To our Bear Creek Lake Park friends, thank you. I appreciate the feedback on the website. We want to try to make sure people know as much as they can, and that's the best ways to get people active. A long time ago, we had a caller about West 8th Avenue, so I'd encourage him to reach out to councilors, Mayor Protem Vincent, or Councilor Mayotte Guerrero, and they can help kind of navigate you through that. There's a question about community land trust. We certainly do. We have the Urban Land Conservancy actually has a property at 14th and Wadsworth, and so we know the Elevation Land Trust folks very well. In fact, I think one of them used to work for the city Lakewood and have had presentations on that, but those are one of the opportunities for new ways to find affordable housing. And then certainly, we had another caller that reached out about affordable housing and looking at mixed use, and I think over the last couple of years, there's been a group called Development Dialogue that has tried to look at mixed use and making sure that properties truly seek that or have that as part of their entitlement. So all good feedback tonight. So I'm going to move now to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda is to expedite council actions, contains both readings and first resolutions and first reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of a routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity in the moment to speak on any of those resolutions. Any council member may request an item on the consent agenda be removed for separate discussion and action under general business. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda into the record?
The consent agenda consists of items 8 through 13. Item 8, Resolution 2022-10, approving an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the municipalities of Lakewood, Arvada, Wheat Ridge, and Golden, the District Attorney for the First Judicial District of Colorado, and Jefferson County for the establishment of the West Metro Drug Task Force, WMDTF. Item 9, Resolution 2022-11, authorizing the amendment of the City of Lakewood amended and restated deferred compensation plan and trust agreement. Item 10, Resolution 2022-12, authorizing the amendment of the City of Lakewood Police Money Purchase Pension Plan and Trust Agreement. Item 11, Resolution 2022-13, authorizing the amendment of the City of Lakewood Employees' Money Purchase Pension Plan and Trust Agreement. Item 12, Ordinance O-2022-1, establishing Title V, Chapter 39 of the Lakewood, of the municipal code of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, in connection with the establishment of entertainment districts, common consumption areas, and associated promotional associations. Item 13, approving amendments of city council meetings, regular meeting January 10, 2022, and regular meeting January 24, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, I'll now open the public hearing on the consent agenda. Nobody in chambers has wished to speak on the items on the consent agenda minus the first reading ordinance. Anybody online?
No one has their hand raised.
Sure. Okay, please.
Yeah, I'd like to push item 12, the entertainment districts, back out of the consent agenda.
Okay, no worries. Tonight, we can't do that because all we're doing tonight is posting.
I know. I have some, I have some questions about it that I don't think we'll get answers to tonight. I know we won't get answers to, but I just wanted to bring it up because we are going to vote on it next week.
Right.
And so I'd like to bring up a question or two about that.
Okay.
So it'd be quick, trust me.
Certainly quick, but not the protocol. It's a first reading ordinance. That's all we're doing tonight is scheduling to the rest of the community that that's when the public hearing will be for that, so we don't discuss items on first reading.
Not at all.
It's just for a posting, no. But certainly, we have a lot of staff that is here to help answer any questions that you have, and they can do that, but this is just for the posting of Ordinance 2022-1. Okay? All right, anybody else? Okay. Close the public hearing. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Certainly. Mayor Paul, I move for approval of the city council minutes and order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearings set for the date included in the ordinance, and for adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Before we vote, is there a comment that, Ms. Hudson, you want to do?
Just a comment to Councilor Olver's questions. We are going to have our deputy city attorney, Greg Graham, reach out to you, Councilor Olver, to get your questions answered and have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes 10 aye, one nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. So I got a lock. Hold on, I got a lock. Frank's, Counselor Stewart, can you please vote again? Is it not working?
Everybody's right.
Okay. So Counselor Stewart's locked. Please try. Okay, we're going to have to clear, and I think we have to lock Counselors Frank and Springsteen since they're voting manually. I can't.
Yes, I believe when everybody moved down, the voting stayed the same, so we need to move the voting down as well. So maybe have-
Oh. You can't make, you can't make it up. All right, so we're going to clear our votes, and we're going to do a voice vote instead of having people move down to touch buttons. Is that okay?
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Springsteen, nay.
Okay, so that passes 10 aye, one nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. Okay, so we'll go back into general business, and certainly we have our city attorney, Ms. McKinney Brown, here to answer any questions, and I would just start by certainly framing the conversation that, I think to a person, everybody on this diocese cares about our neighbors and our church, our faith-based partners, and so we start these conversations. The first time I was actually brought into this was in August of 2021, and it was, in fact, related to complaints that the city received, and what that did was started this process of where we're at tonight. And I would like to just address a couple of things real quick because somebody had said, well, why did the city compromise? And I think that was trying to be in good faith, to bring that forward and say, how does this work? How can we find something? But what happens when you start peeling the onion, you learn more and more about this situation, and, you know, Monsignor Kinkle is, I would consider him a friend, and certainly this is not something that's easy to do because we want to try to assist, but what we've learned from there, not only was the charter language, but was that this piece of property was purchased with open space funds. And open space funds simply state that all that that land can be used for is open space. And so when you start to evaluate this with kind of a lens of equity, if this council, in my opinion, and we'll have our attorneys here, started to say, well, we can grant access here, where does that stop? And do we start to say no to people? And so, you know, I think I give a lot of credit to staff for trying to work and for the church, and I actually have a letter from September 29, 2021, where Monsignor Kinkle states that if we can't come to an agreement with some sort of compromise, then to just shut it down. And so I say that because a lot of the emails we received of late have said, nobody's heard that this was even happening, and there were meetings. In fact, then-Counselor Bita was part of those meetings with city staff to try to look for that compromise. So, you know, I don't think that's an easy discussion, and this is some of the things that we face every once in a while, these one-off situations, but at the end of the day, this is a piece of parkland that was purchased for the specific use of park use. Ms. McKinney Brown, I don't know if there's anything that you'd like to add.
Thank you, Mayor. Assistant city attorney Greg Graham has been working on this project since, I think-
Assistant City Attorney Greg Graham has been working on this project since, I think, February, trying to support staff and evaluate the law. So, he's here this evening, and I've asked him to speak on this topic.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Greg Graham, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I was actually first approached about this question in September of last year. Question I was asked was, "What can we do?" And the fact is, the very, very refact is, it's city-owned property. There is no easement. There is no prescriptive right. There is no difference between, well, there's a difference between an exclusive easement and a prescriptive easement, but those differences don't have any impact on the legal analysis of whether the city has the right to close the road. That was the primary thrust of my legal advice. As the mayor stated, my understanding is this property was purchased with open space funds. JFC Open Space prohibits use of open space and parklands or anything other than open space and parklands. I have not actually seen a deed to this, I will admit that to you. Most of the deeds that we get from, there's a process. City acquires property. We deed it to Jefferson County. They deed it back to us with a reverter clause that says, "If you, in fact, use this property for anything other than park and open space funds, you have to give that property back to the county." So, I haven't seen this one, like I said. It's probably pretty old. One thing I would like to clarify is, in my review of the records, the county actually condemned the property. They condemned a much larger portion of property than just Sanctuary Park. The purpose of that condemnation was so they could extend garrison all the way down to, I believe it's Florida there, and construct an entire roadway as opposed to that little fingerling of a road that goes to the north of Sanctuary Park, which frankly, is not wide enough to put two normal-sized vehicles passing each other, going in opposite directions. So, that's all I really have to say about that. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me. Keep in mind that some of my comments might be attorney-client privilege, and I won't be able to discuss that in an open session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Counselor Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some difficulty here. We had another similar situation over in Ward 1 in Applewood, Bruski's Restaurant, and the suggested fix for that was to do nothing. And we still have the parking problems and everything like that over there. Most of our parks and open spaces have entrance roads, I believe. So, there's nothing about a road that is infrequently used that is, I see, inconsistent with the prohibition on using it for other purposes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, do I have a lot of questions about what's really going on here. I am Ward 3 counselor. You're telling me that this has been an issue since February, and I just found out about it last month and started asking Ms. Newland to send me information. What I was told was that there had been complaints over the years, and so, I asked for all of that information. I also know this area intimately because my kids go to the school nearby there, so I have driven up these roads over and over again every day for years. What I will tell you about Florida is that is a 20-mile-an-hour school zone crossing. And I have watched children and families struggle to get across that street safely every single day for the last, what, six, seven years? And so, what the city is saying is, "We're going to push all of the traffic onto that 20-mile-an-hour zone where children are struggling to cross the street." That makes no sense to me. So, what I said to Ms. Newland is, "I want to know what really prompted this. I don't want to know just details of easements and parkland and all this stuff you're telling us right now. What I want to know is, what prompted this to happen now?" Because what I know is that the school just shut off their access to the church parking lot this year. And so, where you used to have a lot of traffic from the parents and the school going through there, it no longer exists. So, the traffic has actually gone down considerably. But the other issue is Sanctuary Park has no parking. So, the city has happily used the parking from the church for people who want to utilize Sanctuary Park for years, years and years and years, and now the church is being repaid with, "We're going to shut down your one other access to and from." And, I mean, I think with the Marshall Fire, we know that there can be emergency situations that happen very quickly. And when you have 1,200 parishioners, many of them elderly, who need maybe emergency care, who, there might be a fire, you know, I don't understand what the point of this is. And there was some mention of the priest, and I'm sorry, I think his name is Kinkle, you said, saying that there was conversation with the city about shutting it down, and he said, "Just shut it down." But that is not telling the whole story. He was told that to maintain that road, he would have to control the ingress and egress, in other words, have a gate and open and close it and lock it, and that created a lot of liability for the church. So, that's the bigger part of the story here, is that, no, he didn't want that additional responsibility that created liability for the church. It wasn't that he was saying, "Just shut it down." And I think that this has been kept from the people in the neighborhood and the community. And, you know, evidence of that is that the Ward 3 counselors didn't know. And so, my question is to you, what is really going on here? Why are we doing this? It has been like this for 50-plus years. And even the two people who were complaining, apparently, one of them asked if they could still have access to cut trees and get their boat in and everything. So, I, this is one of those examples of, "I want to know, what is really behind this? Tell us the truth. Come on. Give us the truth." Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Maia Guerrero, Jansen, and then Sharazai. Okay, so we're still have folks out of line over here. So, go ahead.
I'm in the same seat, so, yeah, we're locked in over here. I sort of have similar questions, so I hope that we can answer that question, like, "Why now? What's the impetus?" Because I got, just the amount of emails that I've received on this, even as somebody who doesn't represent that area, I'm unclear on like the facts versus a little more hearsay or like just gossip, right? And so, again, this detail about the gates and how originally it was being assessed as like a security issue or a problem with homeless encampment, and then that escalated to be something where now we know that there's a road, so then the road's a problem, but we didn't know the road existed. And so, I have like some additional specifics on that, but I also like, can somebody clarify those, like that actual nonsense I just said, but then I have some specific questions on that.
Thank you. So, we're in an unusual situation where we don't have the staff here to be able to respond to these questions. So, and that's unfortunate. The best thing we can do, I think, would be to, I can ask staff to summarize the history and what started all this and what we learned, the communications between the community and the staff, as well as the communications between the church and the staff, and put some kind of timeline to that to give you the sequencing of information that has transpired. I don't personally have all the information, so I don't feel like I can give that. Really, what I need is community resources staff here, and it is Kit Newland, our Director of Community Resources, and some of her staff who have been working on this over this period of time.
So, just to, as that gets put together, I've got some of my specifics, which like just should be a part of that conversation. I have questions about, is it paved? Like, I have not driven on this road. Is it paved? Is it not paved? Is there signage? Right? Like, these specific things where can we really say that we didn't know there was a -- I just feel really foggy on some of these elements of the details. And Counselor Abel, did you say the solution could be to do nothing? Is that?
No. In another situation where neighbors wanted some protection from the use of the street, we said, "Nah, just blow with it." We did make changes so the same situation won't occur again, but those folks are still stuck with, without the use of their street in many instances.
And the difference there is we're talking about parkland as opposed to private property or street property, which is public land, but not parkland, which is different.
Can, are we allowed to move this to a study session agenda? Is that how that would work? It just seems really clear that there's not, clear to your consensus with this body. Is that like legally, is that allowed?
Well, certainly, if the body wishes to, so I don't think a consensus has been taken.
Great, thank you.
Yep. But, so, yeah, we'll just continue with comments. Counselor Stewart, was that you? Oh, I'm sorry.
It was. I just leaned over. Oh, okay. As the other counselor from Ward 3, I have gotten a lot of communication from citizens and a lot of concern. I do understand the frustration around the timing and the question of "why now?" I think that's a really fair question to ask. My biggest concern, well, I have a couple, but my biggest concern is the implications that this has for parks and open space preservation and use in Lakewood. So, I guess that would be the concern that I have, and perhaps if we're getting questions answered in a long-form email, then we can add that in. I know that the people I've had conversations with have pointed to a couple of the things that were pointed out tonight, which is, this land was deeded as parks and open space, parks and open space funds were utilized to purchase land. Citizens in Lakewood also care very deeply about our parks and open space. So, I just want to make sure that there are not implications down the road for us not preserving our parks and open spaces properly as a city for the future. So, those are my questions surrounding this issue. It does seem perhaps straightforward in this particular situation, but I just want to make sure that we are not setting ourselves up for some sort of precedent to give up our precious parks and open space for other uses. So, I guess that would be the question that I would have.
Okay. And so, I have Counselor Olver, Jansen, sorry, we got, and then Counselor Franks.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I did drive through there recently, a couple days ago when it was snowing. It's paved, but there was a lot of snow there, but it wasn't plowed, so who knows what's going on there. But anyway, I wanted to drive around and take a look at the whole thing. I saw that gate at, was it Hoyt? Yeah, that's right. It looks like a prison gate. It's this giant gate, and I'm going, "Wow, they were serious." Or Jeffco schools are very serious about not letting anybody go through there. And I drove around some more, and it's a huge parking lot, and I got lost. And went up the wrong, the back side of the building, went around the front side, and I would hate to be in there and have a fire or an emergency or something like that. It's pretty obvious that leaving the one route out, well, let's just say, I wouldn't want to be there. But I also can see that we're in between a rock and a hard place here, and with the parks, the actual rules, laws, and everything else are saying, "Well, we can't use that." But it seems to me that we've been kicking this can down the road for a pretty long time now, and I would just suggest that we just keep on kicking it down the road. And that way, nobody's happy, and that's the best compromise of all.
Counselor Jansen, then Franks.
Yes, well, I have a big history with St. Jude since I've been going there for 50 years, and my family used that road to go to church every Sunday or Saturday night. And my family now uses that same road to go to church for the last 36 years. It is paved. It has a speed bump to keep people from speeding. It's 15 miles an hour. There is a little area that people can go and park and enjoy the park. And I did have someone come to my studio yesterday, and I did write a letter, if you'd like to read it. She couldn't speak very well. She had a stroke. She couldn't talk. She didn't have a computer. She didn't know, but she wanted her testimony heard. She's not a parishioner, but she uses that park quite a bit. So, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone for a couple of months till we get all the facts, all the dates, because I had a letter given to me by a neighbor that I went to go talk to there, that it was sent to him December of 2020, and it said, "We are considering closing this park." Didn't have, he didn't hear anything about any complaints. He didn't know anything. And then when I started reading the complaints, I started compiling and looking at the timeline, and it just doesn't make any sense. So, I'd really like, I hope all of you agree with me, just to give us some, give the church some time, and don't gate it off until we get the facts straight. I mean, there's some records that we found that date back to 1977 that I'd like to look at, that we all should look at and see their historical records, and I hope you guys would like to do that. So, I'm making a motion to.
Hold on, hold on. Let's get through the rest of council comments, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. This is more just some information that I would like to ensure is in the report. Obviously, of great interest to me will be what the deed says, if there is a reverter clause, and are we at risk of JFC exercising that if we are out of compliance? Many of you on council know that I've got a pretty long history with protecting open space, and so, the records are important to me, but I definitely want to understand that risk. And so the records are important to me, but I definitely want to understand that risk. I also want to just understand the safety aspect a little bit better. I would like to see any report that West Metro Fire might have done on, on that, knowing that their job is to ensure that there is proper ingress and egress. And so, and also speaking to Counselor Stewart's point, my goal here will be to ensure that we understand all the facts and also we don't set some type of precedent that could put other parkland at risk. And so we just want that white paper or report to kind of cover all those topics to ensure that we have all the information to be well prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Springsteen, is your hand still up?
Yeah, there was, there was just one more point that I wanted to make. The school has built a new building. And so the building has moved away from Hoyt Street toward the east. And now there's a long driveway in from Hoyt Street to get to the building. It makes access to the school more difficult. That gate that the school put up that goes into the church parking lot can be opened. So the concern I want to put forth is if there were ever a school emergency or a school shooting, to have access from the church parking lot could be critical. And so let's, let's say there was a lot of traffic that day in and out of Florida. And the only access then becomes the Garrison Street access. I do not see a reason why we would put the children at that school at greater risk by cutting off that access. I think that's a very, very important part of this consideration. And I think that we should maybe consult with the Jefferson County Schools on that issue. Thanks.
Okay, Mayor Protem.
Okay. Here's, here's what I'm understanding, is everybody's uncomfortable because they don't have all the information. So rather than just say something like, let's shove it down for two more months or whatever, because that just to me seems like a real arbitrary date. Can we possibly get a date when we could get that information? Rather than just throwing something out there because you have the calendar, correct?
Do you mean to schedule another meeting or to get the white paper?
To get the white paper.
Hard to commit, but seems we can certainly have that done in the next couple of weeks, I think, if that's fair.
Well, for me, that would work rather than just, let's do another couple of months. If we could get that in another couple of weeks with everything that everybody's asked for, which is a lot.
I'm taking notes.
Okay.
And we can replay the video as well.
Video. Would that work for most of council? For them to give us the information? Okay, well, that's, that's why I asked the city manager if you need more.
Yes, how about if we say, why don't you give us four weeks and we'll try to get it done sooner? How's that? Thank you.
That works for me.
Counselor Jansen?
Just wanted to let you know that that Hoyt Street gate is locked, has a lock on it. So if there is an emergency, somebody's going to have to come out and undo that lock, just to let you know.
Okay.
So if you're interested, as Counselor Springsteen just suggested, we can have a conversation with the schools too, just to talk about the, the purpose of that lock on Hoyt Street. Because I believe you're talking about the lock between the school and the church. Okay, not on city property. Thank you.
Counselor Matt Guerrero?
Just want to add while we're listing all of the things that we don't know, just if there's an additional component for me is if there's, what are all of the legal options, right? So to the point of impacting our open space, et cetera, like very important point. But also, right, is there other, other types of compromises? Like can it be designated as an emergency route, which would prevent it from needing to be like locked, but it would not be, you know, used in the same way, might not have the same legal issues? Or, you know, can we make it official that their parking is for the park, right? Where then that is the intention of that road is to allow for park parking? Like I just wonder if there's other, like additional possible legal options for us in terms of setting precedents and keeping people safe.
Okay. So there's been a suggestion that Counselor Jansen was going to make a motion. And then there was another suggestion by Mayor Protem to alter it a little bit. So Counselor Jansen, how do you want to proceed?
I'd like to make a motion to, before we, and I understand everybody's dilemmas and everything, but just to get the facts out, I think a month is okay. Everybody's okay with that? I mean, a month from now? Are we going to decide on this or what? Just, I don't understand what.
So my recommendation would be to get the, the white paper or the report or the document that has all the information that you've asked for. And then once that comes out during your general business, decide what you want to do from there. Do you want to have, now do you want to have a public conversation? What, what do you want to do from that point? So that can easily be something that you allow for in your general business.
Can we get all the letters that were sent to the neighbors too with the dates? I do have a few of them because the neighbors did save them for me.
If they were generated from the city, absolutely, we would have those records. But thank you for offering.
So. Is your motion still standing?
My motion is to, before, not to put any gates up or close the road until we know the facts and make a decision.
So, okay, we have a motion and a second. We got to be, this isn't a council decision. And I think that's what's been blurred and I'm not sure why. So council through the charter has vested and it was brought to tonight that the Parks Director has the ability to make this decision. That decision has been made based upon the factual nature of everything that's been brought forth, which started with the complaints. So I think there's certainly, if council wants to take a timeout and want to learn more, that's fine. However, legally through the, through our municipal code, this decision does not come to council.
I can also add to that, there won't, the road won't be closed in the meantime. There won't be gates put up in the meantime, at least on the city's property. What happens on the school and the church property, we don't have control over. But there, there won't be any until, until this conversation happens and after the report is submitted.
Counselor Franks?
I just wanted to thank City Manager Hodgson for that additional information. I think that certainly helps us to, to understand that. But certainly I, I, we just need to see the information first. And then inside that report, need to understand what actions were permitted to take based on the deed is, I think, going to be a controlling document and anything we learned from Jeffco. So I'm perfectly fine with four weeks or sooner. Looking forward to seeing all that information.
So I have Counselor Abel, Jansen, Matt Guerrero, and Mayor Protem. Is that your? Okay.
It's me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Strom, please. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you.
This is all out of whack.
This whole night is out of whack, magnetic field. I appreciate that this is not a council decision, but I personally do feel, I feel like we owe it to the community to know more behind the decision that was made in, you know, the vein of transparency. I personally would like to let, know more as well. It's really hard to get questions from so many residents and to not have a real concrete answer. So I appreciate the willingness of, of the staff to put together more information so that we too can be informed.
Okay, Counselor Abel?
Thank you. I'd just like to point out that the motion has nothing to do with disposing of park property. The motion that's before us right now, may I finish, Mayor?
Sir, the floor is yours. Keep going.
Thank you. The motion is for us to get the information, digest it, and then come back and revisit this. Is that correct, Ms. Jansen? You seem to have doubt all over your face, Mayor, but the author of the motion, the offerer of the motion has just confirmed my statement, so.
I didn't need a history lesson. I understood what her motion was.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, please cast your votes. Okay. So we're back to a voice vote. So all in favor of the motion, which clearly wasn't that clear, but we're just going to go with it. So please cast your votes or just say aye. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
So let the record reflect that passes nine aye, two nay, the two nays being Franks and Paul. Thank you. Okay, anything else under general business? Counselor Abel?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, I was having a conversation with the attorney about the CCU case, especially that there is, there are a lot of twists and turns and nuances about it that some new members of council may not be aware of. And did so with the goal of perhaps having an executive session. The attorney had no objection and in fact offered that there is another case coming up having to do with the Morrison, the IGA on the Rooney Valley, I believe, with Morrison, and a case that's filed there. Apparently there's something close to happening, or I wouldn't say imminent, but I just want to say that we, while I'm not proposing right now an executive session, I would like to have the necessary preparations made before our next regular meeting so that we can entertain the idea of a special, an executive session to discuss those two legal matters. We could, according to policies and procedures, and I could ask for it tonight, and if there's a super majority, fine, but I don't want to spring it on folks without giving them a couple of weeks to think about it. So I would like for us in a couple of weeks to entertain as one of the business items, calling an executive session to discuss legal matters having to do with CCU and the Morrison IGA. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else under general business? Counselor Springsteen?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to follow up on a, a couple of comments that were made. You know, a lot of times comments are made about me and they're extremely disrespectful. And I think that we should speak up for each other. And so I just heard a couple of comments that I'm going to say again. The mayor said he doesn't need a history lesson from Counselor Abel. Extremely disrespectful. And then he also put down Counselor Jansen, who is just learning how to make motions, and said that her motion was not so clear. And, and that was extremely disrespectful. How about we just help the new people who are on council rather than criticize them? And so I'm, I'm going to suggest, Mr. Mayor, that you be respectful to the people on this council instead of so critical and demeaning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Very thoughtful. Okay, I have a couple of things under general business. Ironically, Counselor Springsteen, up next, we're going to be reviewing a Code of Ethics. So Attorney McKinney Brown has produced a draft copy of a Code of Ethics that we'll submit to the group. And we'll get that adopted as we've seen some, some issues. And I think Counselor Abel actually has wanted to see this passed for some time, so that'll be great to get the Code of Ethics put before the body for discussion. Judge Stavich sent out her, excuse me, sir. Judge Stavich sent out her retirement notice, which I think is on June 3rd. And so, you know, Judge Stavich is our chief judge and we certainly wish her well. But that process has begun internally to start to look at how do we replace Judge Stavich? So that will be going concurrently and hopefully we'll be engaged with somebody to appoint in June. The school board has reached out to us and have asked if we wanted to have a joint meeting with them in April or June. So I will send out an email if there's an interest to have a joint meeting. We actually haven't had one of these in years, so it's not a bad idea. So they threw out some dates and I will throw that out to the group. So with that, Ms. Hodgson, do you have an executive report?
Yes, I have a very brief one. And actually, it's really just two pieces of really good news. I wanted to let you know that Scott Hefty, our court administrator, has announced his retirement and his last day, I want to say is March 4th. And Tammy Smith has been promoted to the, to be the new court administrator. Tammy has worked for the city for a very long time and this has been a real goal of hers. And there was a competitive process with several outside candidates and I was a part of that process. And it was an, it was an impressive group of individuals, but Tammy really demonstrated a, a real strong acumen for all things that are happening in the municipal court. So congratulations to Tammy. And you will see her periodically through state of the courts and, and other things when the management team is in front of you. And I have one more promotion I wanted to mention to you. We have a new police department division chief and it's Mark Reeves. And that was another really competitive process. I was a part of that process. And there are some very competent folks who are interested in leadership positions in the police department. And you'll be seeing Mark Reeves periodically as well in your neighborhood meetings or up here in our council meetings. Again, it's Division Chief Mark Reeves. So congratulations to both of them. And that's it. That concludes my report. Thanks.
Very good stuff. Okay, Ward One.
I have had a number of constituents contact me this week about the retreat, which apparently isn't posted yet. And the retreat is on Saturday, our annual planning retreat. And I did check to follow up and I can find it nowhere in our public notices. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to just thank, there's been a number of community members who have reached out in front of the planning retreat. Ward One does a great job and our constituents in sharing what they see is valuable. And I look forward to being able to move some of that forward hopefully at the upcoming retreat. I also wanted to just make a quick pitch. The Lakewood Advisory Commission is in desperate need of additional folks to join in on that. We're well represented from Ward One, but we would love to see constituents from across Lakewood join in that space. And then I would just use my privilege up here on the dais to congratulate South Lakewood Elementary for winning the Regional Spelling Bee. And I know this because it was my kid, so. Thank you.
That's awesome. Ward Two?
So the Legislative Committee had its first meeting last week. I was elected chair to that committee. Generally, we will be meeting on every other Tuesday afternoon. And so I want to thank everybody for their time and patience as we are figuring out that space. It's all, all newly elected counselors. So we will be bringing a brand new attitude and take to that space. In terms of Ward specific information, we also specifically need Ward Two applicants to the LAC. We're, we're really underrepresented in that particular commission and generally within the inner workings here. and generally within the inner workings here. And so just really encourage, if you've been on the fence about it in Ward Two, which I know a few of you have been, I've heard from you, this is, this is the time to shine. Our Ward Two meeting is a hybrid meeting this coming Wednesday at the Clement Center and on Zoom. You can find that Zoom link on the city website. And then finally, CC's Pizza is having their grand opening. It's the CC's Pizza, a couple doors down from Casa Bonita. And that is on February 24 at 11:00 a.m. Come eat a lot of pizza.
Well, I found out when CC's Pizza is getting their ribbon cutting. Thought I knew, but anyway. I would like to invite everybody, actually in the community, to the Ward Two meeting. If nothing else, just for the beginning, you can go in on Zoom. But it's going to be the 2040 West Colfax Plan, which sometimes I think there's kind of this perception that Ward One and Ward Two should only be concerned about West Colfax. But frankly, the whole city should. It can be a very big economic driver. There's things going on there, and the 2040 plan is, is a great way for people to find out about it. And not only is Ward Two underrepresented, represented on LAC, but they're not represented at all. And I don't want to go through one more overview again where they tell me they're still trying to get people from Ward Two. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Hope to see you at Ward Two meeting.
Ward Three?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things from our Ward Meeting and speak to a couple of things that we had in public comment. We had a wonderful Ward Meeting this last weekend. Lots of people came. We focused heavily on having speakers come and speak about waste diversion and sustainability. And there are a few organizations who work in waste diversion in Lakewood who are actually giving some incentives to Ward Three residents in particular to sign up for some of these fabulous programs. So if you are interested in learning about waste diversion, like compost and hard to recycle, and would like to take advantage of that, please email me. That's an important thing that we heard from people in public comment tonight, as well as the importance of waste diversion in our communities. So this is a great opportunity to get involved with that. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to thank Counselor Stewart. We did have a wonderful, robust Ward Meeting. It was, it was great to work together with her as a team to put that together. Yeah, and, you know, I'm going to respond to every time. So the mayor, again, just now, implicated that I have some kind of ethics issue, and this is why you're creating the ethics, whatever it is, code. But, you know, political differences do not mean you have ethics issues. And that's just something we need to get across. Last week, the mayor ridiculed and criticized me for simply announcing the Ward Three meeting. Made fun of me. And, you know, it's gotten to the point where my workplace environment has now become so hostile that I can't even announce my Ward Meeting without being bullied. And I'm just trying to think in what other walk of life a single mother, woman of color, would be subjected to this kind of harassment on, on a daily basis on her job. And, and this is what we need to look at as a council. Is this, is this what we want the public to see? Is this what we want them to think of us? If we band together, we can prevent this from happening. I also wanted to just report that the Lakewood Body Cam, Camera Program was reported in the Jeffco transcript, which is, which is great. And, and I was very proud to be the only counselor mentioned in that article. The last paragraph said, allegations of excessive use of force and discriminatory tactics have been brought against the Lakewood PD in the last few years, leading to increased scrutiny from members of the public, and most recently from Lakewood City Council member Anita Springsteen. And I, I think those questions and requests for scrutiny have led to a lot of great things, like what we saw tonight. So thank you.
Ward Four? No report.
So I wanted to first start out and thank all my, the folks on the screening committee. We spent three nights together interviewing some of our best and brightest in Lakewood. It was quite inspiring. So we will be bringing forth recommendations for several openings. So thank you to all the committee members, and certainly thank you to all the, the interviewees. We certainly enjoy that, and thank you for sharing with us. I did want to make sure folks are aware that the community survey, we have the scientific survey, which 3,000 randomly selected residents, those cards would have went out to. But there also is, if you go to lakewood.org, there's the community survey where you can take the online version. It's really important for us to hear from as many people as we can. So that will be an augmented to that scientific survey. So please take the online survey and tell us what's working well and what's not. We certainly want your feedback. And just to touch briefly on the sustainability piece, I don't know if they're available in all neighborhoods, but I do belong to a buy-nothing group in my local area. It is a great way to, you know, recycle things, you know, furniture. You no longer need clothes. You know, we even have a seed box that goes around for when people are getting ready to start gardening. It's a great way to reduce your out-of-pocket expenses, get to know your neighbors, build strong community, and ensure we keep as much out of the landfill as we can and share with one another. So just wanted to share all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Five?
How about, I'll start and report historically, and you can go future. How's that? So we just actually had our most recent Ward Five meeting was a Saturday, February 5, I believe. And like Ward Three, got to celebrate a very nice, robust conversation around traffic and safety. One of the things that Councilwoman Jansen and I both heard many, many times on the doors this past campaign season was concerns around traffic and safety. So we were very appreciative, very fortunate to get a representative from Lakewood PD Traffic Team, and also from our Traffic Division to talk a little bit to our community about what's being done out there, the ways that we can also help, you know, keep an eye out and help ourselves stay safe too. So that's really exciting, what we had in February. In March, we are working to try the hybrid thing, although I'm a little nervous after tonight. But I will say, we are trying hybrid, and I want to do a big shout out and a thank you to, part of what's made this possible for us is that we do have community members in Ward Five that are coming forward and offering to volunteer time to help us facilitate these meetings. So look forward to being able to offer that, and I'll toss it over to Counsel Jansen.
Yes, definitely. It was a very good meeting, and it did go on time, and we had extra time after, didn't we? So, and I also wanted to talk about our next meeting. So we're hopefully to have it at the same place, Westwood Church, Westwood Church. And, and I want to thank Councilwoman Springsteen for sticking up for me and, and saying something. It is hard when that does happen, little snarky remarks get put here and there, and it makes it uncomfortable on council. I just, I'm a big girl. I can usually handle things like that. But yeah, I understand. And I just want to say our Legislative Committee, we're going to be bold, and we're going to be fearless. We are going to have a lot of fun, too. So, and that's it for us.
Great. Well, certainly, my apologies, Counselor Jansen, if I made you feel that way. I was trying to get through, getting the vote done, so my apologies.
And I understand. It's, it's a tough situation, you know, and it's kind of emotional, and, you know, it's, it's a big, it's a big history lesson in our city, and, and I just, it's a hard thing to do.
Better way for clarity to make a motion, because, you know, normally, we don't do that in general business.
Right. And I just, that's why I was like, looking for some, like, how do I do this? It's a motion, but I, we're, are we going to vote? Are we going to?
Yeah, no, that's great. We'll get that figured out next time.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so retreat, we're having a happy hour. If anybody's interested in doing that, please let me know. It's at 4:30. So our retreat is Saturday, our planning retreat, which should be great. And then we'll do a little get-together after. So I just need to get a count of folks that want to go, and then I'll know where we're going to go, and we can get that posted. So look for that. Lakewood Symphony is out and about, which is really cool if you haven't had the chance. And two years ago, before they had to go to the online version, somebody bid to become the conductor for a day. And the winner of that gave that role to a young Camp Paha camper named Heidi Allen. And so last Saturday, Heidi Allen got to direct Peter and the Wolf for a little bit, and she was just absolutely thrilled. So thank you to the high bidder, Anna Nikki Fararva, for bidding on that, supporting the symphony, and then giving that to Heidi. Mile High Flood District, which I am the current chair, we have a resolution this week to bank $775,000 more dollars of their money, which is the district's money, which will be matched by our stormwater dollars to continue on North Dry Gulch, and continue to look at getting all the West Colfax, or most of West Colfax, out of the floodplain. Talked about the retreat, the, Mayor Protem's excited about that. Oh, state legislature, you might have seen, there's a CPR story, and there is a bipartisan push to outlaw municipalities from doing slow-growth initiatives like Lakewood did. And certainly, that came up in our sub-housing group, and as somebody who supports local control, that's not something that I certainly would never support. But I think it's interesting that the state's really taken a look, because the communities that have historically adopted these tend to have tremendous problems with affordability for those most in need, for first-time buyers, for minority folks. And if you look at Boulder and Golden, they really do struggle. And so there was a push, and, and I don't think it would pass, as I know CML is against it. But that's just interesting that, that is starting to look at what maybe a new, modern-day version of redlining looks like. And so I think it merits a conversation in our community as well going forward. So with that, I want to thank everybody, and we are done 30 seconds shy of 11:00 p.m., 10:59. Thank you.